Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the October 4, 2022 meeting to order and ask everybody to stand for the pledge, and we have a special guest that's going to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
Do you have his name on record? Does someone have it?
I'll get it after.
Okay.
He wants to interview us.
Oh, okay. Good.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Fisher.
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Aliaga.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And Trustee Alamothu is absent this evening. We have a quorum.
Okay. You have your agenda. It's amended to reflect that there's item number 12 on the agenda now. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented tonight, amended as amended.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The agenda is approved. We have now a board and public announcements. Any members of the board with an announcement? Okay. Seeing none, I'll make a couple announcements. We have been conducting a committee to discuss the subject of trash haulers in the township. There have been a number of people, particularly people that live in the southern part of the township that have paved roads in their subdivisions, are unhappy that there are so many trash haulers coming into their subdivisions, and those trash haulers are very heavy. So they were hoping that we could do something to reduce the number of trash haulers, and we've been meeting on that. Many of the people in the north part of the township are not particularly enthusiastic about having the right to select their particular hauler. And so discussions have been good and very active, but it's getting down to the point where I'm afraid that I'm not going to be here for long enough to see that through. And so I'm going to leave that and lateral the ball to trustee, assumed to be Supervisor Aliaga, and he can make the decisions on how to handle that. One other thing is I have received indications from two entities that they want to come and speak to us about installing charging stations, electric charging stations around the township. And I have deferred that until I get direction from the board on whether you think it's time to do that, or it's too early, or maybe we could put out a RFP if you're interested. So I'm putting that question to the board, and I'll take responses generally at this point, or anytime you wish to contact me. Okay. Now we moved on to a public comment, anybody with a public announcement also, any members of the public with a public announcement. Okay, how about public comment? And this is a comment, five minutes, by anybody to speak on a subject that's not on the agenda as a separate item. So you'll have an opportunity to speak to agenda items for the same period of time when the agenda items are called. But is there anybody that'd like to speak at this point on a matter that's not on the Seeing none, we now move to a public hearing. Actually, we've got two hearings. Pardon?
I did.
Oh, great.
Appreciate it.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
I got my stuff.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Frank, right?
It is. Thank you. Greetings, everybody. My name is Frank McLeary. I live in Clarkston, in Independence Township. And I was last week here on behalf of application for treasurer of the community. And I think it's important for the board to understand that my purpose here is to communicate to the board just the ethical aspects of the board's responsibilities, of which I was looking for, and also looking for future trustee positions or opportunities, as I've stated in my comments last week, that I'd like to be part of this community in due extent. So one of the concerns that I had was in turn not being able to, first of all, be in attendance while Mr. Brown was speaking, because I received notes from the court's office that professional courtesy was for me to sit outside, yet Mr. Brown was in here. So it's just a concern that if we're doing this in the future, that we have an open meetings act, that all parties can be a part of that, that could be a part of it. The second thing is in regards to the ethical aspects of having Mr. Brown vulture himself as treasurer, and yet I'm not able to vote. Other people in the community weren't able to vote, and it was an appointed position. So there is rules and regulations in municipalities or parts of the statutes that indicate that an individual who's a part of this community cannot vote themselves to increase their wages and/or in turn vote for themselves in that. There, I talked to Mr. Kelly about that, and he indicated there was. But I've also gotten other counsel that indicated that that's really not the case. I'm not here to debate legal. I'm here to encourage the trustees to follow a protocol that will allow it to work. If you understand my statement, again, I'm here to communicate to you that there's a protocol, if you're going to allow Mr. Brown to vote for himself, that there needs to be a motion by the board that indicates you're allowing him to vote for himself. That did not occur. What occurred was Terry indicated that she could vote herself in the booth, and Mr. Brown indicated very specifically in that, that he was going to make that decision when he got called for the vote. So in protocol, you can take a look at that, and in the future, I amend and say to each of you, follow the procedures that is ethical in here. And if you're going to go vote for yourselves, that the board itself has to give you permission to vote. No hard feelings on my end, I'm just trying to get here future, because I want to sit on that board with you guys, and I want to do the right thing. So I've done my homework. I want to be a part of the planning commission and do those things. And again, there are very specific rules about ethical dealings and that in the planning commissions and that part of it. So that's why I'm here. I'm here to have that comment, and I appreciate your email back to me suggesting that. And if there's anything else I can speak of at this moment, I'm happy to have that communication with each of you. Okay?
What did I suggest?
Say hello. You said thank you.
Yes, okay.
Okay, you said thank you. Any questions that you have of me?
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public care to make a comment on a matter not on the agenda? Okay. Now we'll go to public hearings then. We've had two public hearings, both involving Thandera, one of them involving Thandera, District 1, which has public roads, and one, Thandera 2, District 2, which has private roads. And so we'll call a public hearing to order on Thandera, District 1, for extraordinary winter maintenance, not performed by the road commission. Kim?
Good evening, Township Board, and to all of our residents. On October 5 of 2021, the Township Board of Trustees approved an assessment rule and adopted two SAD districts in Thandera, one for public, one for private, as Supervisor Fisher has stated. We've had a couple of amendments that were needed to be made, and new contracts for the remaining four years were signed and entered into. So we had to adjust the assessment rule, and a proposed rule was submitted to you a couple of weeks ago. When an SAD role is amended, the statutes require a public hearing, providing the property owners within the district an opportunity to comment and voice objections verbally or in writing, and that also preserves their right to go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, which they must file for within 30 days of the confirmation of a new proposed rule. So we're here tonight with a public hearing to allow the residents to speak. Okay?
Thank you. So this is, as I said, SAD for the special assessment rule for District 1, public roads.
Yes, and if I may add, District 1, the unit of benefit is being reduced by $149.40 or $29.88 per year. I just want to add that in. We took out one quarter unit of benefit, we reduced it to zero for a lot that did not have a developed road in front of it.
So that changed the rule?
That changed the rule, and the new contract prices were put in place.
And that change actually compelled us to have this public hearing?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for getting that teed up for us. Members of the public and people that have received notice that are subject to this SAD, anybody care to speak?
My name is Evangelist Janakis. I live at 8990 Woodlawn Avenue, Clarkston, Michigan, Sunny Beach, not Thandora Park. I am here before you again. It's been exactly one year disputing this Thandora SAD number one. We gave you, my wife and I gave you pages and pages of facts and letters and maps from the road commission, legal letter from the lawyer of the Department of the Road Commission. You didn't listen. You have twisted the facts. We went to the tribunal. The judge made a final decision in our favor. In that decision, he said you had no right actually to put us in there in the first place. But he ruled in our favor. I'm getting a little nervous here, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
You were court ordered to remove us from the District 1 and the SAD and reimburse us our money. You have not been granted a stay on your request for a reconsideration. You are now in default. You won't even listen to the state of Michigan courts, not even me, not anybody. My wife and I demand you follow the court order and remove us from this district and reimburse our funds. And before I leave the podium, I ask for any rebuttal before I take a seat so I can defend myself, but there should not be any.
Well, since you've asked, I will mention that that court order, the determination that the judge made is not final. It's not a final.
Final decision.
Wait a minute.
Final decision.
You can rebut, but wait till I finish speaking, please.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, thank you. That court order is not final because a motion for reconsideration has been made by the township. As you probably know, the judge made a ruling on a point that had not been raised by either party and had no legitimate facts to support it. And so we have made a motion to reconsider that so that we can provide those facts to a judge in that tax tribunal and see if we can secure a proper, as far as we're concerned, a proper final order. So there's no final order yet.
Yes, and my decision in there says final decision. Final judgment from the court.
Final judgment. Sorry, go ahead.
Also, if you go back to when this was initiated, Thandora Park had no right to put the Sunny Beach residents in there. They had no legal right, and that is listed in there. You did not have the right to put us in there in the first place, and you did not have the right to charge for private snow plowing. That is the law. Now, if you want to go back 20 years, we can do that. You had no legal right to do so in the first place. Did you have permission from the road commission and the state? No, you didn't. You have no legal right to do so. And I demand, my wife and I demand that you remove our property immediately.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in. Yes?
My name is Mark Romanowski. I live at 4691 Algonquin, in the SAD 1 current scope of things. Just to add a bit to what Evan was pointing out, what I don't understand is, we're actually, we paid three times taxes, okay, to support our roads, if you think about this. So Algonquin's a public road, I live on Algonquin, okay? It's supposedly owned by the county, and it was taken over by the county after the original paving project. It was private before then, so we had to do our private snow care, okay? But Algonquin, the county agreed to own and maintain. So they're not timely enough for the Thandera residents, okay? Fine, why aren't we using the funds that they have portioned for that county road, like all the other county roads, right? There's some amount of money that is supposed to be for caring for Algonquin. Why isn't that money appropriated in part of the SAD that would give us a discount on the cost of the SAD? I don't see that. What I see from the stuff that Evan had shared with us and presented to the tribunal, a company had said they'll charge $15,590 or some number like that per year to maintain Thandera 2, whatever Thandera 2 is defined as, okay? That was as of this year. You multiply that times five, it's $78,000. So why is the special assessment district $480,000? That's six times the cost of the original quote that we had. Now, maybe that's invalid and costs have gone up, but six times? I struggle with that. Okay, so that aside, we have the public cost that we are all being taxed to take care of our public roads. We have the, Algonquin's Oakland County Road. Why aren't we getting the funds to incorporate that into the SAD? We paid, had a special vote, and we said we want to take care of our county roads ahead of things, and everyone voted for that, made it by narrow margin. But why we have surplus funds? Why aren't those surplus funds taking care of Algonquin? Did a wonderful job on Estin, thank you very much. It looks wonderful. Why can't we use those funds for Algonquin? It's a county road, too. Falls under the same rules, the same definition. I don't hear any of that happening. And then you have the SAD, right? And you're hitting us for that. Three times, I'm paying Oakland County, I'm paying, I paid for the special assessment district, or that's on the docket right now, and we also had the special surplus funds to fix our county roads, of which Algonquin is one. Three times, affecting this county road, right? Why? That's illegal, and the tax tribunal says it is. So clearly, there's something wrong here, and we need to fix it. There's a number of options, and I don't hear those being discussed. It's all, you're on Algonquin, you're going to be paying. Everybody on Algonquin should be taken off the SAD. Everybody. That's a county road. It should be, we should make Oakland County do their job, repaving it, plowing it, and if we have to have extra maintenance done because we think it's, you know, hey, it's a double-blind hill, and it's downslope, and it's dangerous, fine, then let's get the funds from Oakland County and apply it to the SAD, lowering the cost for everybody on the SAD. I'd like to hear that those options have been considered at least before we say we're going to pay six times the cost of the quote for winter maintenance alone, just the winter That's my piece, and I'd like to officially be off of the SAD, as it's written.
All right. I can tell you that at the very commencement of the conversion of the road from private to public, the road commission expressly stated that they would not allow these roads to become public unless it was understood that the roads would be privately maintained, privately. Okay, sir, you're out of order. You're out of order, sir.
I know it. What makes those decisions?
I'm listening, Gerald, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So the road commission expressly stated that the maintenance that would be required on these particular roads because of their character would be beyond the policies and procedures of the road commission, and that they would not be able to do it. And so therefore, it would have to be privately maintained. Reason for the SAD then is, now, of course, if there was no SAD, a few people might contribute to having the roads plowed.
Yep.
And maintained, and other people would pay nothing, and everybody would be unhappy.
Agreed.
And so the township essentially offered the idea of a special assessment district for this maintenance, and that would facilitate everybody paying their private share for the maintenance of the roads to do this extraordinary winter maintenance.
Okay, I get that.
And that is what this SAD is for.
With the exception of Algonquin. They spoke, and I've got the documentation in here, it says, and I read it before the meeting, it says that they wouldn't do the other roads in Thandera. Algonquin, though, they will maintain as a county road. They will maintain it. And they have said that in a letter that we have as well from them, saying they will maintain, they come by, but it's already done. That's why they're not doing it now. The county trucks have been up and down the road every other day for the last 10 days, because I see them. They've been patching and maintaining and doing all kinds of things on Algonquin, it's a mess, okay? So just to, Gerald, just with all due respect, the documentation says they will take care of Algonquin, winter maintenance included. It may not be as fast as we want it, right? But it is their responsibility. So again, I go back to the idea of, why aren't we getting the funds from them? If we want to add that to the SAD, get the funds to lower the cost for everybody on the SAD for the winter maintenance. We only want to pay once. It's not that I don't want to have the winter maintenance, believe me, I do, but I only want to pay once.
As I said, the road commission indicated at the time of the conversion of the roads, they wouldn't have been converted at all, but the road commission said that we'll approve the conversion of these roads with private maintenance.
Okay, so, but the way I read it, and I think others have read it, is Algonquin, they will maintain, including the winter.
That's right.
It's the other roads that are off of Algonquin and Thandera, they won't, because of the hilliness of it and the turns, and their trucks won't do it, which we've known for years.
That's not my understanding, but I'll take another look.
Okay, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
My name is Cheryl Janakis, 8990 Woodlawn Avenue. I just want to reiterate one fact. If that was true, Mr. Fisher, you would have used it in the legal battle with the tribunal. That was an old thing, and it stated that they will not do any additional snow plowing other than what they already do. The extenuating snowplow stops at Michigami is where it starts getting extenuating. The roads go from 66 feet to 44 feet. The curbs and the hills begin. Okay, now, Mrs. Feagley has claimed it could be weeks before we got out of there, maybe for the people in Thandera. I showed you pictures of the snow plowing on Estin compared to the snow plowing that we get on Algonquin, that we've paid triple for. Ms. Feagley has property on Pine Knob Road. She has no SAD. It does not take her a week to get out.
If I, we shouldn't be talking about her personal information. It's not fair.
Okay, well, I, okay, it's just a rebuttal to what she says, but if it's, I apologize.
We should not talk about where she lives, she doesn't even live there.
Okay. It's her property.
But I don't think that's fair. We should not be talking about employees' personal information.
I apologize. I'm not used to this.
Respectfully would ask that.
I apologize, Ms. Feagley. But this shouldn't happen, because I gave you the snowplow route. It goes past Pine Knob, down Estin, and it will go right down Algonquin. But everybody chooses to ignore this. They are the additional snow plowing. They are the extenuating snow plowing. There is no problem plowing our streets. We have a letter from the legal department, which we have been giving you for a year. Now, even though you have asked for reconsideration, I do believe that the judge can read that consent judgment from way back then, and I do believe he will rule in our favor. But until then, you have not been granted a stay. That was a final decision from the court, and you are in default. I know you're a lawyer, sir, but you need to listen to the state. I have nothing else to say.
Thank you so much for coming in. Anybody else care to speak on this subject?
We're still talking the snowplow removal for Section 202.
For District 1 only, which is the public roads.
Yeah, I got something, something to say.
Don Coppersmith, 4825 Algonquin Boulevard, right at the top of the hill, most dangerous driveway on all of Algonquin. All right, now, the thing about Algonquin is, it's the only paved road around there besides Michigami and then the Ritzy neighborhood there, whatever the name of it is. Everybody comes up Algonquin, whatever they do their business, turn around, they come right back down Algonquin, and then they go out Estin Road and either go north or south on Clarkson Road. There is Stickney Road, no hills, nothing, right at the end of Michigami right there. Right at the end of Algonquin, there's Estin Road. I mean, what is it, Stickney Road? Goes out to Pine Knob Road. It's a dirt road. So nobody that comes up there, up Algonquin, wants to go back out to Dirt Road. Use a little common sense, pave that road. People who are going to go the other way on Clarkson Road towards Sashwa Road, they could take that way. Why do they keep coming back down Algonquin every single time? I see hundreds of big trucks hauling gravel and everything else, going up and down, and all the, you know, garbage trucks and every deliveries. They all go up Algonquin and come right back down the same way. And they also don't take North Estin to Indianwood because that's Dirt Road. Nobody cares. They just want to stay on the pavement. So you're averting all this traffic down just those two main roads, county roads that have to be maintained because there's so much damn traffic. Think about it for a minute. Use your brains. Pave Stickney Road, tell them they got to do a special assessment, you know? There's no hills on that. Everybody from the Thandera Park could go that way. They don't have to go through the hills on Algonquin. They don't have to go through the hills on Elgonquin. They don't need to. Go that way. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else for District One? Public hearing, District One. I don't see anybody. Is there anybody online that would like to speak on this? I don't hear anybody, so I'm going to close the public hearing on Thandera, District One, and I'm going to open the public hearing for Thandera, District Two, which are the private roads, and it's also for extraordinary maintenance, snow plowing. Would anybody care to speak on this subject? Sir?
Good afternoon. Jason Manning, 5062 Wabancy. Here we are again, within a matter of 15 minutes of Mr. Brown on ethics. The fact that you're seated in front of us when you have properties within the district, a clear conflict of interest.
I'll recuse myself, but I mean, I always say I'm for this one.
Very well, yep, that would be appreciated. I wasn't around last year, was unable to attend when the first SAD came out. At that time, I was paying about 200 bucks a year for a household for a snow removal, and you hit me with about 192% increase. All your letters that are in accordance with, in adherence to, this, that, and the other, all the legal speak had nothing to do with the increase that I was facing. You motioned anyway to go ahead with it, regardless of 10% or not. My question is, how do you get out of the system where I'm not in accordance with or pursuant to any of your speak, anything you write down in lawyer speak? I want to be able to take back over my private road, have autonomy, and I decide what is a fair and reasonable price. The fact that my prices went up the amount they did, you spend my money so easily. You're another form of government. I just want my autonomy back. I can do it cheaper and get better quality. Your guy comes through, drops the blade one pass, and he's gone. That leaves the side splash at all my neighbors' driveways, which, when I was in charge of that, our guy took care of that stuff. We had better quality. Now I'm paying more for less of a product. I don't agree with any of the special assessment process that you've roped me into. The lines were gerrymandered. You had zero signatures out of five on my road for the paving project and zero out of five for the snowplow. But because of percentage in the entire neighborhood, I'm subject to the whims of everybody else, when I should be autonomous. Private road, you just said with the other people, the county didn't take it over, you're not road professionals, you weren't able to pave the roads to the standards that the county demands. So, here we are. When does it end? How does it end? You just talked about garbage removal, right? How soon, people, are they going to dictate what it costs to cut our lawns, what it costs to get rid of our garbage?
Please speak to...
What it costs everybody else.
You have to address...
I'm talking to the people. They can hear me.
No, address the board.
They can hear me. When does it end? Because your 5% administration fee, I don't know where these numbers come from, why would you, you all sit up there and nod north and south when it comes to, that's been considered, but I don't think really you've considered anything. I think there's benefit to the township. It's a money-making scheme, and I think it ought to be brought to an end.
Thank you. Kim, would you give some indication of what the history of SAD for District Two is? I mean, how was that established?
Could I, Gerald?
Yeah.
This is for the attorney. Do I recuse myself now or when it comes to the board? Because typically, I've recused myself when it came to the board.
Yeah, if you intend to recuse yourself, why don't you ask for the motion now?
Yes, and I believe I have for every event, paving, snow plowing, I have always recused on Thandera Number Two, 100%. So, I would ask the board to accept my recusal.
I'll move to recuse Paul Brown for Thandera Two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You are recused.
Thank you.
Okay, so, just a little history on how it was established, because the gentleman's really asking that question, I think.
To establish an SAD, it is done by petitions. Petitions are circulated by your homeowners association or representatives within your district, and the signatures, verified signatures must be in excess of 50% of the road frontage within the district. And at that point, a request is made to the township board to please consider an SAD, and then the township board hears your objections and then decides if they want to go through with the special assessment district project. There's engineering costs, and bids are put out there. In the later stages, an assessment role is prepared, and you have a chance to object twice, one to being in the district, and secondly, to the amount of the assessment placed on the assessment role for your parcel.
But the key to me is, so, this was established at the petition of the people. This was not something the township dropped on everybody.
Originally, it was by the petition of the people. The last one, we were in a position, time-wise, that there was going to be no snow plowing or winter maintenance and road repair if the township did not initiate it last year. The only option would have been to let them go without any assistance for the 21, 22 winter season.
But the whole concept of snow plowing in District Two was initiated by the homeowners.
Correct.
That's really what I wanted to know.
Yes, and one other thing to point out is we have 255 parcels in District One and 106 parcels in District Two, okay?
Okay, thank you.
One other question, if I could? Kim, want to...
Sure. You want to, wait, you have to come up to the podium. I'd be happy to have you speak, but...
So, Kim, how do we get to the costs?
You have to state your name again, please.
Mark Romanowski, 4691 Elgonquin.
Thank you.
How do we get to the costs? So, we have an old quote that, I mean, is still valid in 2022. It said 15,500 and something per year, okay? And if you multiply that times five, you get 78,000. Let's just say that those numbers are good. But the SAD One is 480,000. I mean, how did it get so costly? And this is just snow. This is not like repaving the roads.
No, I understand. I believe there were bids put out by your HOA representative this time. The township did not seek bids. We put it back in the hands of your representatives. And quite frankly, we had estimated higher prices because of what gas had done, and the contract prices came in the same as last year.
The contract prices?
Contract prices that were signed for the remaining four years were at the same rate that he had been charging in the prior SADS. There was no increase. That's why your assessment went down.
Okay, but your SAD says it's 480,000, but the quote says 70...
That's a five-year quote.
I get that. But if you multiply it times five, assuming, if his was a three, his quote was for three years, same price for all three years. But if you mean it times five, it would have been just $78,000. That's six times the cost.
I will research that for you. I know I saw an old contract with 15,000 on it, but I'm going to guess it was for a lot fewer parcels.
That's right. It says Thandera Two, and I don't know what that means.
That was probably the new paving parcels that were added to District Two.
Okay, but there's a big price gap.
Okay, I think, if you don't mind, you can discuss this afterward.
Yes, stop in and see me, and I'll go over all of that. I understand where you're coming from now.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else care to speak on District Two snowplowing, special assessment rule? Anybody online? Okay, seeing no other speakers, I will close the public hearing, and I know that we have received some objections in writing, and we can refer to those.
I will mention those when we come to the board.
Okay, we have now come to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda tonight has two items, a request to approve the approval of the meeting minutes from September 20 and the special meeting minutes from September 27. And number two, it's a request to approve the September 27 check run in the amount of 1,079,510.60 and ratify the September 16, 2022 payroll, the amount of 304,359.22, and September 30. Is there anybody that would like to either move to take one of these items off or to approve both items as presented?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Any discussion from members of the public or online? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved as presented, items number one and two. So, that takes us to the regular business for this evening, and the regular business number one will be a request to adopt a resolution to confirm the amended assessment role for Thandera, District One, public road, public road special assessment for extraordinary winter maintenance. Any discussion by the board on this after the public hearing? Paul?
If we can get money from the county somehow to chip in for that, that's certainly be worth putting in that effort. I certainly recall in 2018, and I think some of the residents there will remember as well, we had put it up for bid and went with the best quote, which was a new provider that year in 2018. And I went back and checked today to make sure that was the right timeframe, and it was. And the very first snowfall was a half-inch dusting, and he didn't show up with salt. And I started, my phone just blew up, and I went over to Elgonquin, and there were two cars up the curb and in the yards, a few houses in front of Esten, somebody who crossed Esten in the ditch, somebody back in Thandera who busted their wheel on a curb because, you know, maybe the tires weren't great and they went down. So, that was within, the snow fell at like 7:00 in the morning, and the guy never, we fired the guy. We never paid him anything. We had, I think we got our current person who ended up doing it to take it over, and he's been there since. But not being there right away with salt on some of those roads, people will be in their yards. And I don't even remember that, but I think that's important to point out, because we'll never get the road commission to be there that quickly. Even if they came the same day, they won't be there in the morning, and everyone's trying to get to work. So, I just thought I'd share that specific information.
Thank you. Ron?
I think it's important to note, though, too, is like you're talking about, we fired him, we did this. Basically, with this SAD, we're not doing any of that.
Not anymore.
Yeah, we're not in charge of who they hire, how much it costs or anything. The only thing that we're in charge of is administering, collecting the fees, and that amount of money is sent to us through the homeowners association or the representatives of each of those districts. So, I mean, we're just handling the money. We're not making any decisions or anything else.
Government won't do it as well as the public, and so, that's how this one's set up. The homeowners and the residents get to go through the process of picking who they want to use, and we don't, we're not going to get involved in that part. You should get better pricing that way than having us do it.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, any other discussion by the board? Carrie?
I just think it is important that maybe Kim or Mr. Kelly reiterate to those that are asking to be omitted, reiterate what the process is for them so that they understand and that it's clear.
A two-part hearings.
Yeah. The district boundaries were not amended as part of these corrections to the role. The district boundaries are not open to appeal. What is open to appeal via these public hearings this evening is the amount you are being charged. And we have to have 20% of the road frontage represented in objections to stop the adoption or confirmation of the amended rule. Thank you.
Well, the 20% would be to establish the SAD in the first place, I think.
I'll let Dan speak to that.
Yeah, that's true. And I think your question also was that if they object, they have to state their objections on the record tonight or in writing before tonight.
Correct. Thank you.
That preserves their appeal, right?
Just one second, please.
All right.
You have to object in writing.
Wait, you might come up, no. You can object in writing or here orally at what you have done.
Cheryl Genakis, 8990 Woodlawn Avenue. This is the first trick their lawyers will pull, your lawyers. If you do not object in writing, they will say you are out of their territory, and that will nil and void. You have to complain in writing. Everything has to be in writing. Document every single thing, everything. So, they're misleading you from the get-go, because a couple people lost because of this on the last SAD. Complain in writing and keep it. Keep it. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion by the board? Carrie?
I'd like to read into the record the objections that were filed with our office. I'll just read through, this is for District One that we're discussing, and I'm just reading the parcel numbers.
Thank you. All right.
Questions? Jill?
Yeah. This is on District One.
Just in districts in general, Mark Romanowski, 4691 Elgonquin. So, when it comes to objecting, we can only object the cost. We can't say we don't want to be in this, and isn't that part of why we went to the tax tribunal? I mean, how can we not be allowed to say those people on Elgonquin are not part of the SAD unless you change it some other way?
So, there are two parts, this is a two-part process. Number one is the establishment of the SAD and the establishment of the district. And when that decision is made, then people can challenge that at the tax tribunal.
Which was done, okay.
Earlier. That would have been previously.
Correct, and I think that's when Evan did that.
That, previously, right. And so, what was done, what was challenged previously, it's still subject to challenge.
Okay.
But now, this is a new amendment, and this amendment is only with regard to the assessment role. So, the only thing that is subject to challenge or take to the tribunal would be the amount on the assessment role. In other words, a fair assessment on the assessment role.
Okay, so, we, at this point, if somebody said, I don't want to be a part of the SAD, that's not on the table?
Not as far as this new amendment is concerned. It was challenged before, and that's still a valid challenge.
And do each of us have to go to the tribunal, each resident, to get the same result, or is Evan's stand for all of us on Elgonquin?
Well, I can't answer that. That's too broad a question for me to answer here. I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, we're done.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Yes, sir?
Evangelist Genakis, 8990 Woodlawn Avenue, Clarkson, Michigan, Sunny Beach. Now, you say this is for the cost.
For the amount of the assessment.
Of snowplowing, right?
Yes.
Amount assessment?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if you do not have the right to charge us in Sunny Beach, we don't belong to Thandora Park. We're in Sunny Beach. You don't have the right to put us in there. That is the law. You didn't ask permission from Oakland County. You didn't ask permission from the state. We don't have the permission to put us in there. So, I'm objecting to the cost that you're charging me, because it's illegal.
As I understand, just to be clear on the record here, you're not objecting to the amount of the assessment. You're challenging the fact, or the argument anyway, is that you shouldn't be in the district at all.
No, I'm charging, because you're charging me, and I'm complaining about the amount. I shouldn't be there at all, anyway. I shouldn't have the cost to pay.
We don't need to complain. We won't. We're happy.
But you said you don't want to be part of the SAD.
I don't want to be part of the SAD.
And you challenged that previous... And you challenged that previously, as I understand.
Yes, we did, and they said, take us off.
Everybody on Algonquin should be off.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, so it's down to the board for a decision on how to proceed from here. We have, you can defer it, you can file or make a motion to approve or to reject, whatever, it's up to the board.
I'll make the motion, and I'll move to adopt Resolution 2022-022 confirming the amended assessment role for extraordinary winter road maintenance within the Thandera District One Public Road Special Assessment District and authorize the township clerk to certify and file the same as presented.
Second. Mr. Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Thank you.
Trustee Aliaga?
No.
Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Motion carried.
Motion carries. Okay. So now, we go to item number two on the agenda, which is a request to adopt a resolution to confirm the amended assessment role for Thandera District Two. And you're still recused.
Thank you.
Yeah? And this is the private road extraordinary snow plowing assessment. And this, again, is just the assessment. Any discussion by the board? Karen?
Sorry, I have one parcel to read into the record. Well, actually, it's three parcels of objection. 0812-331-008, 0812-354-002, and 0812-354-010.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Just to clarify one thing, you said this was for extraordinary winter maintenance on the private road. This is for their winter maintenance.
Winter maintenance, yes.
There is no county action on this one.
Well-stated. Yeah.
Sand repairs.
And repairs, that's right.
For District Two, it's sand repairs.
Right. Okay. Any other discussion by the board? Members of the public on District Two. Comments on District Two?
Jason Manning, 5062 Wabancy. I don't understand the administration fee you just clearly explained about the other district, that you have nothing to do with it, that it's left up to representatives. I don't recall electing any representatives within my neighborhood to speak on our behalf or to draw the boundaries for which districts constitute the overall effort. Frankly, I suspect a little collusion in that, be it Mr. McGee, who was formerly a trustee and good buddies with Mr. Brown, took that ball and ran with it. Again, the percent increase, you know, wasn't taken into consideration what I was facing as a resident. We're looking at, like I previously stated, about 192% increase for lesser product. I'm just sick with the process and the system. Again, I don't know how to get out of it. You know, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not going to invest that time. I fall into the category of shut up and pay. It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate what you do to veterans and the members of the public.
I think this SAD has another four years to run, is that right?
Yep.
Four years to run, and so if it's going to be reestablished, that would be your time to deal with that.
I would just like to comment for one quick second on the admin fee. We probably have four months of an entire staff involved in reviewing this and establishing this SAD on top of legal services, and I'm afraid the admin fee doesn't even come close to covering what has been invested on the township's behalf.
Take yourself out of the unnecessary costs that you're absorbing. I'm willing to take on the maintenance of my own road, but you insist on doing it for the wrong money.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
We're just doing a job.
Thank you. Just address the board, please. All right, we've, anybody online care to speak to Thandera District Two?
Can I speak, please?
Pardon?
Can I speak, please?
Sure, please, come up. In the meantime, maybe I'll ask, is there anybody online that would like to speak to this after this gentleman finishes? No. Yes, sir?
The name is Michael Royce, 8672 Picoult, in the older part of Thandora. I fully support the SAD. My wife was formerly the, involved in the Walters Lake Road Association, trying to collect fee from all the residents in the old part of Thandora for snow plowing. And we were lucky if we got 50% of the homeowners to contribute. That's what kicked off the SAD request, and I'm 100% in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. So we've heard all the comments on the motion or on the subject. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2022-023 confirming the amended assessment role for winter road maintenance and repairs within the Thandera District Two Private Road Special Assessment District and authorize the township clerk to certify and file the same as presented.
Thank you. Any other discussion by the board? Roll call, vote.
We don't have a second.
Oh, sorry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Trustee Aliaga?
No.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you very, thank you very much for coming out. I know that the people that are here, with the exception of the gentleman that just spoke, are unhappy, but I appreciate that you've come out and expressed your views. Item number three, request to approve the first reading of an amendment to the Eagle Ridge at Morgan Lake Planned Residential Development with the addition of 4.79 acres and final site plan approval of an amendment to Phase Two of the development to include 24 single-family homes. Mr. Otman?
Hi, I won the contest for the longest title.
Yes.
Eagle Ridge at Morgan Lake, all of you are probably very familiar with, but it's a multi-phase planned residential development in the township on the south side of Mayby Road, east of Interstate 75, right near Mount Zion Church. There's been many iterations of this. It's gone on for 30-plus years of this project, but the most recent development that's underway consists of 230 total houses on three to four phases. Phase one is already constructed, there is 54 homes in that phase, and Phase Two is 49 lots that are currently under construction. So they are proposing an amendment to add additional houses. PRDs or planned residential developments are a little bit different in the ordinance that does require special land use approval by the township board by way of recommendation by the planning commission. There has to be notice requirements for a special use. That will be done in, you know, in preparation for when the second reading happens, if everything goes well tonight. Since the project included an addition of land area, what they did was they bought a landlocked parcel. If you look at the concept plan that was provided in the packet, you'll see a grayed-out area that was landlocked. They purchased that parcel. And so the PRD documents will have to be amended to include the additional area. There's, part of the planning commission discussion was over road maintenance because currently there isn't one, because everyone who is going to live in Phase Two and future phases has to access one access point on Morgan Lake Drive, which is off Mayby Road. So the planning commission asked that the developer meet with the HOA, the homeowners association of Phase One, and we had a meeting last week that was very productive. I think we got some sort of direction going, which was positive. And I think we're looking to hopefully see more of that common ground to be reached. One thing that we did was pointed out today and just recently, a couple hours ago, was there's some, might be some issues with the easement that Phase Two and future phases have to drive over Phase One roads. That's something that we'll have to look into, but that may be another document that needs to be amended. But at this point, I think, you know, instead of getting into the nuances of those discussions, I want to have Mr. Carlisle explain exactly what the PUD or the PRD amendment is and what they're really requesting tonight.
Mr. Carlisle?
Thank you. Good evening. I think Brian actually explained it pretty well. The original PRD plan included all of this area that is currently being included in Phase Two, with the exception of this one five-acre parcel that was privately owned and in a disputably landlocked position. When the developer came in, the original developer came in with Phase Two, this property and its access was still in dispute. So we recommended that he remove from Phase Two that portion of his property that was still in question about the access to this landlocked piece of property. What happened with the current owners is that they were able to negotiate the purchase of the five-acre landlocked piece and therefore remove this questionable, this questionable cloud or encumbrance on the property. And so at that time, it enabled them to come back in, even though a portion of Phase Two had been approved, is to bring back in the balance of Phase Two that was originally included as part of this. So...
Was that other property included in the easement or not? Do you know?
No. Well, there was an easement, but the easement, the description for the easement was, had, was in question. The description for the easement in terms of its purpose was in question. The owners of the property always believed that they had access to Roar Road via this easement, although the easement, I think we always had, I think the township always had a question, but that being a private matter, we pretty much stayed out of it. So that is why we suggested until that issue was resolved between that property owner and the predecessor developer, just take that part of the property out, go on with the balance of Phase Two. So they did that. They came to the planning commission, they came to the township board, they got approved for a lesser area of Phase Two. Now that they've, now that they've resolved this and have purchased that property, it takes that issue completely off the table. Actually done, I think, a great service to everybody by doing that, by taking this landlocked piece and incorporating it into the development. And now this is why they are asking for an expansion of Phase Two to reinstitute what they took out before, plus add in this five-acre piece that they purchased. So it really cleans up a situation that was kind of messy and frankly, had been in dispute since the property really first was, you know, proposed as a PRD in 1999 and finally resolved that. So with that, the plan that they've come up with, they came up with, has been accepted by the planning commission, recommended by the planning commission for that portion that they're adding back in. The original part of Phase Two for which they were approved is under construction and still stays the same. The road system fits in perfectly well. There were a couple of items that came before the planning commission that the applicant resolved in a satisfactory manner about making sure that there was language in the master deed and bylaws protecting the wetlands. There were a couple of minor comments that both the engineers' office and our office has that we will, that they did address, but we will also further address during construction plan review. And so it is this now, this project that's coming before you. And so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So normally, between first reading and second reading, that's the time for documentation to be finalized, clarified to mutually agreement with the mutual agreement here between, in this case, between homeowners and the developer.
Correct.
And if I'm understanding this correctly, some of that clarification in this particular matter would also include clarifying the existence and mutual agreement about the easement?
Correct.
Okay. So any approval we give tonight would be subject to all the documentation, including the easement being clarified?
That's correct.
Okay.
And let me just say this, that the easement that is, that we're talking, this easement that we're talking about, it's still consistent with what was approved as an overall PRD, which is of a, which in our view is a singular entity, even though there might be separate homeowners associations, it is a singular entity and consequently, the failure to recognize that road easement is in essence a violation of the PRD. So that obviously needs to be resolved.
We just need to clarify all that.
Absolutely.
To the mutual agreement. And I think it's relevant to know that we're in Phase Two here, and there are going to be subsequent phases that will use the roads in Phase One. So it's, it elevates the importance of coming to an agreement on a master
Yes.
understanding for the use of the road.
Correct. Yep.
Great. Okay. Mr. Carlisle and Ms. Otman have asked for questions. A board member, questions? Any members of the public have questions?
Comments?
Kyle?
I am also the HOA president for Phase One of this development. I just wanted to take the brief opportunity to state, to talk to some of the trustees who I haven't had an opportunity to discuss these matters with or they have not had the opportunity to hear the many concerns of the residents in Phase One. I know Mr. Ritchie has sat through all of them and has heard them. I would encourage you, the rest of you, if you have not read them, to look at the planning commission meeting minutes where most of the residents expressed their thoughts on this development. The number of problems that have occurred over the years, the situation that we as residents have been stuck with, and what we're trying to claw our way out of. And when we took over the HOA last, about a year ago, we still, and even to this day, we've had issues with this development of roads that are flooding, roads that are cracked. We don't have street trees, 120 street trees that are missing per ordinance. We have a silt fencing and sewer bags still there. And so we've been working through a lot. And it's, as we took over, the original developer had sold the second half and created a new HOA. And so we're in this position where this, the new developer is basically using our entire roads for the next 200 some, the building of the next 200 homes. So you can understand the frustration of all those residents who have trucks driving by their property, on their property, we have doorbell footage of it, damaging our roads, damaging our curbs. Again, some of that's going to happen, that's the nature of construction. We understand that. But at the same time, we don't, we shouldn't then sit back and share that cost of those 200 homes, especially us, the first 50 residents. So there have been a lot of issues and a very sticky situation, frankly, that probably was caused by the township when the planning commission approved last May the ability for the current developer to go forward with the second phase without an agreement in place in the first place. So we came into this at a disadvantage, from a negotiating standpoint, all of that, with all these issues going on. We were at a disadvantage. Now, I am optimistically hopeful. In the last month or so, we've finally started to have some good conversations on these issues and are moving in the right direction. We have not, we have not reached a resolution, but at least we're moving in the right direction with the help of Supervisor Fisher, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Otman, and Clearview, their attorney, our HOA attorney that we have involved. We still need to work out a lot with the prior developer, Mr. Zervos, because all of this is tied together. It's all tied together because we cannot... It's all tied together because we cannot, we cannot agree to continue to have a new phases built and built and built when we still have all these issues that we, we are left with here. So, uh, again, I refer you to those meeting minutes because those will address the, the specific residence concerns. I asked this board, um, and I think Supervisor Fisher kind, kind of hinted to it, that before you get to the second reading and it's approved, that at that time, all of the issues are resolved. Don't approve the second reading until all of these issues from legally speaking, the master associations in place, there has been an agreement to fix the road, the current condition of the failing roads. Let all of these issues be resolved, uh, before you finally approve this. And again, I'm opt, I'm hopefully optimistic that all of the parties are going to work hard over the next, are going to work hard to, to complete that and get that done. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your, your expression of optimism and getting this done and I know, uh, Clearview is optimistic as well. Yes, sir.
My name is Vincent Bizon. It's, uh, 7925 Foster Road. And, um, I'm ju, just curious. I see a lot of housing coming about in the village. There's up by I-75 and, uh, and Dixie, there's a huge development. Now they've got this one. And we're talking about hundreds of houses here. So I'm wondering, is the planning commission looking at the educational system and the other resources that it's going to take to support this additional, uh, number of people living in this township? Does that come into account? I mean, these, these families are going to be young families and they're going to have two kids on average. That's a lot of kids. That's a few hundred kids, maybe a thousand. Is our, our school system, can that absorb that? Can it deal with that? They're not doing so well now, as I see some of their. Statistics.
I think the last I heard that they had room for a thousand kids. So they're below where they were. Uh, maybe Mr. Ottman behind you will be able to answer that better, but that's a good point.
You're saying there's capacity in the school system?
Yeah, I think Mr. Ottman may have specifics.
Let me just add one, one other thing. There may be capacity in the school system, but at the current capacity level, they're not performing very well. I don't know the statistics, but I know a lot of these kids graduating from high school can't read. Now what is that? Now you're going to make it worse by adding more kids?
Are you speaking about Clarkston or just overall in the society?
Clarkston. You think, you think Clarkson schools are so great? Go look at, look at the statistics. Okay, that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, with the last residential development that was really approved was Walden Village. And this was analyzed and we actually got comment from the superintendent and, and Mr. Brown is correct.
Superintendent Schools?
Yes, correct. Uh, because that was a, a major question for the public when, when Walden Village was going through the approval process. And Mr. Brown's correct. It was about a thousand kids. They were short and they have plenty of room and capacity and they look forward to more children. Because the more the count is, the higher, you know, the, those dollars get funneled into the school system.
And Brian, the capacity of, of the township to handle more housing and so forth, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that's all part of the master plan study that's now underway?
Correct.
Yeah.
Brian, I just want to make a comment back to the proposal we're talking about, uh, the first reading. That's what we're looking right now. We talked early about actually the comments of the local resident came and addressed his concern about this. As you know, I went there actually a couple of times and looked at it and I see it's just one main entrance. And we talked about this a couple of hours ago about the traffic, the construction. So it's a concern right there about the second reading. Do you think it's going to be, this is going to be fixed before we get into the second reading? Because, you know, it's a, it's a concern.
Yeah, it's, it's my hope that we at least have a framework in place and to, in order to move forward because we don't want to get into future phases of this.
Right.
You know, because let's be honest, the homes are selling like hotcakes. Uh, I think we've got all the building permits released in phase two right now. I mean, they're, they're going crazy o, over there. So it's, it's really a successful project at this point. So I, I imagine it's only a matter of time before they'll be back with phase three next year. And, you know, we'll be back doing this all over again. We want this all to be, get resolved and, and finalized. So, you know, the, the two HOAs can get along and have a master association that governs all of the common area maintenance and, and this will be kind of put to bed a little bit and we'll just be dealing with a normal site plan.
Carrie?
A question for Brian or, or maybe Dan. Then any current future HOA agreements, is, does that become part of the legal documents that are still pending before the second read? Or are they separate documents?
Right. That, that's what we're working on right now so that each HOA may have their individual, but we want a master HOA. So that's what the two parties are trying to arrive at. But they will all be controlled by the master agreement. Yes.
So then in the future, with future phases, if there's additional HOAs, then we'll have to amend the masters?
No.
No, no, it's going to incorporate that. And it may not be necessary to have individual HOAs if they all.
Okay.
Currently we have one HOA in place with futures to come. So we'll have to see how that gets worked out. And hopefully, as, as Brian said, that gets worked out between now and when the second reading occurs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody?
Just a little background on, um, Eagle Ridge too, is that, uh, I guess people are looking at this now saying, you know, we're overbuilding and everything. This development was approved back in the 1990s. It actually was approved, uh, in its concept, uh, concept and everything, uh, before Oakhurst was even started. So, um, and Oakhurst is a one-way, uh, in, uh, road as well. And there's more, uh, there's more number of units in Oakhurst than there is in this development. So. But, uh, uh, Eagle Ridge was like, say, was approved and designed and approved way before Oakhurst and has been part of the, uh, the plan and mapping of the township for many years now. So.
Very good. Uh, any other members of the public wish to speak? Anybody online wish to address this? Okay. Uh, is there a motion that somebody can fashion that will tie together all the loose ends?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of an amendment to the phase two of the development consisting of 24 single-family lots located on the south side of Mabye Road, east of Interstate 75. Schedule a second reading before the township board of trustees following completion of the required legal documents and review by the township's general council and direct the clerk to publish notice in the manner prescribed by law.
Support.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Uh, roll call?
Treasure Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Trustee Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, now patiently awaiting Director McKee. Request for authorization for safety path repairs, Mabye Road, east of Clintonville, phase three of the repair scheme.
Good evening, everyone. Um, if the board recalls, just a little background, there's a section of safety path that runs on Mabye Road from Clintonville east towards the Orion, uh, line with Independence. Over the past two years, that section has been slowly being rebuilt. In 2020, we did about approximately 800 feet. In '21, last year, we did about 1,400 feet and this is phase three, which is complete this section. Uh, when it was originally installed, it was asphalt. Uh, when they developed the, the neighborhood right there along, uh, I guess would be the north side of Mabye Road. Um, it's deteriorated really bad. It's, uh, the safety path belongs to the township, so this is part of our maintenance program. Um, this has been on the schedules and, uh, looking to get board approval tonight to have the final section repaired. Uh, we did use the competitively bid contract we have with Italian Construction, which was renewed for additional three years with no cost increase for safety path repairs and replacement in '21. And, uh, based on the pricing on that, uh, came in, the price came in pretty decent, uh, which is good. We, this is a budgeted item. We do have, uh, money that's budgeted every year for maintenance and repair of ours existing system. And, um, we're looking to get the final phase approved tonight.
Questions or comments by the board?
Just a quick question. Do we have very many that are asphalt still?
We do have a few. There is a section that we were looking at that's on our list to get repaired on Sashville, um, south of, uh, Mabye Road, uh, towards Pelton, towards the Waterford Township line. That is a part of our system, you know, and there's asphalt there, a lot of driveways there. So we're, that'll probably be a phase, uh, repair too, because it's getting a little shaky down there too. Plus it's not wide enough. Um, it's pretty narrow there and, um, asphalt's a great material, but it doesn't last. You know, this is all going to be concrete. Everything's going to be concrete. It lasts a hot, a lot longer. And, um, we make it to, build it to our standards, which is going to be wide enough for people to go by without knocking into each other.
Now, the comparative price with asphalt and cement, it, it varies over time. Where is it now?
Yeah, right now, um, concrete is, well, we use our contract, which is a wonderful thing about Italian Construction, because we originally approved this contract, I think it was 19 and, um, or 18. And they renewed it for additional three years with no increase, which is kind of unheard of right now in today's world with, uh, construction material and cost of things. They extended it. So to be absolutely honest with you, I haven't done a comparison on that because I know that they're competitively priced very good with concrete.
Okay.
Really good.
Thanks. Ron?
Uh, you planning to get this done, uh, this year before winter?
This will happen this year. That is correct. They, they said they're, one thing about this company which was really impressive is, when they get into it, they knock it out. They get in and take care of it. And just a little fun fact, I suppose, is when this safety pass system was, um, initially brought to fruition with the township, they installed most of the original stuff, a lot of the concrete stuff back in, I think it was the nineties, early nineties.
Anybody still around in the company?
I don't know. Those, yeah, there might be. There might be a couple guys. But they're a great company to work with. They've done excellent work. They've done other work for, flat work, work for the township at fire stations and, um, just been fantastic job. They're very good concrete workers.
Great. Any other questions for the board?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Dave, thank you for your hard work and dedication. I can see that we budget $100,000 and we end up, we're going to be in that spending, oh, under $70,000, which is very nice. I mean, it's nice to see we don't have to amend the budget, you know, to spend more money and see that we're going to be spending less. And we're going to have a good results out of it. I mean, obviously I support to keep our infrastructure in good standards. Good. I just want to thank you because it's, I'm glad to see this.
I appreciate it. Thank you. We try to, you know, that's one, with the contract that we have, this, this company has been very good to us. Taking care of us and, uh, and they were highly recommended. They, I believe they have a similar contract with Bloomfield. They do all Bloomfield Township's concrete works, safety paths and they're, they're very happy down there with them as well.
Ron?
Yeah, just a comment that this is only 70,000 for this particular project that we did do other repairs this year. So if you want to really investigate it, we're probably over budgeting repairs for this year. Cause we've done quite a few budgets. But I'm just saying, we've done other, we've done other repairs than this though, this year, right? He's not going to admit that it's over budget.
I don't want to disagree with you, Ron, but we are under budget this year for repairs.
But that's the part of why we're doing this.
We have to try to get done this year before the.
Dave, I want to thank you for your hard work. I'm going to rephrase that.
Any comments or questions by members of the public on this item? Anybody online? Hearing on, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the proposal for professional services associated with phase three of the Mabye Road safety path repairs as submitted by Italian Construction of Washington Township, Michigan, in a amount not to exceed 69,500.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And, uh, you're going to stay right there. For item number five, request to approve Bay Court number two pump repair Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, Peerless Midwest.
So part of the Department of Public Works yearly maintenance that we do for our production wells that produce the drinking water for this township is we do flow testing and monitoring. Flow testing of a well and pump gives us the health of the well itself, how much water the well can produce, plus the pump, if the pump is working efficiently or not. So we do this every year to keep a track on how the performance is of our production wells. In May of this year, we did, uh, pump testing every year as we do for all our wells. And we identified that, uh, the number two pump at Bay Court is, now this is a pump, is, uh, about 27% off of where it should be, which means it's, it's wearing out. It's old. The last time this pump was rehabbed was in 2012. And the lifespan before you need to start really taking a look at things is right there at the, at the end. 10 years you need to take a look at. You can pull it out and inspect it, make sure that it's, uh, the parts aren't worn out, there's not holes in the casing. And, um, uh, that's why you do pump testing every year to find out if there's any, any drop off in performance. That just wastes energy and you get less water produced and everything costs more. You just run the cost up. So this is part of our CIP, which we do, and this is a budgeted item, to have this pump pulled and inspected and repaired as needed to get it back into tolerances and back into the pumping performance where it should be. Peerless Midwest, the great thing about them is that they have a competitively bid contract with Oakland County for the exact same services. And they have also signed a cooperative purchasing agreement. So essentially what that means is any vendor who signs this agreement with Oakland County and has a contract with Oakland County guarantees any municipality or school district within Oakland County, the exact same competitively bid pricing. So we didn't have to go out for bid. Oakland County did it for us. And, uh, we've used them, uh, Peerless Midwest for several years. I've used them in other communities. Oakland County uses them. They do excellent work. And as I said, this is a budgeted item for this. It's earmarked in our budget specifically for this job. And actually the quote came in less than what was budgeted for. So there's a couple bucks in savings there as well. So we're looking to get board approval tonight to have Peerless Midwest rehab pump number two at Bay Court.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments by members of the board? For another under budget performance.
Is there any expected downtime for the residents?
No. Uh, we scheduled this to do this off, off season, essentially what we call, you know, you don't want to take a big well. This is one of the biggest producing pumps that we have. Residents aren't even, they're not going to notice anything. Demand is down as the weather gets cooler. So that's why we scheduled to do this in the fall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by members of the board? Members of the public? Members of the public online? Nothing? Uh, is there a motion to move this one?
I'll move to approve well and pump maintenance services available through Oakland County's Cooperative Purchasing Program Contract awarded to Peerless Midwest of Michawaka, Indiana, award number 005260 for professional well maintenance services is outlined for the Bay Court Water Treatment Plant Pump Number Two for a do not exceed amount of $49,810.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Don't go away. Item, item number six, uh, a request to approve budget amendment over $10,000 for equipment maintenance and repairs, water mains, account 591536931002.
Trustee Ritchie, this is the account that we blew up this year. So that's why I'm here telling you. This one did go over budget. In July of this year, uh, we had a main break, which is rare for us, which is not going to, it's a good thing. But this main break was over, um, in the vicinity of White Lake and Dixie. And repairs were pretty intense there. We had to call in a contractor to do this, plus there was a lot of restoration. We put this budget, we put this account over, over budget was the restoration cost. There was some pavement that we had to get replaced in, uh, in the parking lot and, um, plus the repair to have the, uh, the contractor come in to do it because it was a little bit, in a technical nature, a little bit beyond our capabilities. So we do budget for this every year. I think Rick helped me out. I believe this is the first time we've had to come to make an adjustment in this account, this account, since I've been here. We do budget for such repairs, but this one was an expensive repair. So, um, we are, we are reallocating money from one account to another. This is not a budget amendment that we're looking for. It's just an adjustment. And due to the dollar amount, we want to have transparency and get board approval for this. Yes, Paul?
Uh, this is a, was this a different location than the, than the water break we had a few years back at the railroad tracks?
This is, this is up by, um, but kind of by the water tower, up by the medical building up there. Yeah.
I remember the other one was.
Kind of blew out their parking lot in an island and, you know, it's already, it's restoration's on us. So this is what really pushed us over. So this adjustment really was, um, is to help us take care of that. take care of our vendors with that, plus it leaves us a little cushion until the end of the year. But overall picture, there's not, it's just a reallocation from one fund that we're saving some money on, so we're not increasing the budget or anything like that.
Have you finished your presentation?
I am done.
Okay. Any other? Any other comments or questions? No other comments or questions by the board? Any members of the public? Members of the public online? Seeing none, is there a motion to move this?
In compliance with the Township procurement, PD cash, credit card policy, move to approve the budget adjustment as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven, I'm going to use the word Fandera here, but it's not another public hearing or another project. It's for a request to approve a 2022 budget amendment, number 25.
Yes, good evening, everyone. This is actually Part Three of Fandara Two, the new paved area. This all came to light late in 2021, if you recall. That's when the new paved area was actually added, and we had a separate contract. But we didn't have it budgeted in '21, and obviously, budgets were already approved by the time this was, became known. So we've been kind of trying to deal with it in '22 as well. The first amendment that we did back in December of '21 covered the first payment for the new paved area, so we got through that. And then we knew what the balance of that contract was. We came back with Amendment Two earlier this year. We elected at that point in time not to amend any further, because we didn't know what the new contracts were going to be for the '22, '23 season. Now that we know, and we have made the, that payment already, we're about $3,400, $3,800 short, I believe it is. And that's what this amendment is for. And that will conclude the '22 payments. Everything is budgeted properly for '23 going forward, because we know what the contracts are now going forward for the next several years. So we will not have this issue. This has happened to be a timing thing, and we just kind of got caught in it, that's all. So this is just to clean everything up at this point.
I'd ask the board to make a motion to recuse me from this.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are recused.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Rick? By the board? Any comments, questions by members of the public? Yes?
I just have a question. Linda Bazone, 7925 Foster Road. I just, you know, I was looking at all the items on the package, and I noticed that J.C. Lawn Service gets a lot of money from our township. And I was just wondering, were their bids accepted for this, or they just automatically get it because they did?
I think this was mentioned earlier. We didn't have anything to do with the contracts that are, that we currently have. They were done by the HOA, as far as I am aware.
They privately solicited and approved contracts.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? Anybody online?
I would like to.
Yes, please.
Cheryl Janakis, 8991 Woodlawn Avenue. Paul's gone, but I had a question on the JEC snow plowing that wasn't answered, regarding it being dissolved in 2021 before this ever began. And you had stated that it was an old thing, but you misunderstood that it dissolved before the last resolution. It is the only service, JEC service, registered with Laura in the state of Michigan, and they are not in good standing.
I think I can address that from, just in some discussions that we've had.
But Paul said he, I was just wondering, Paul said he would get back to me and said it was not.
This is not a corporation. I think that's the mystery here. This is like a proprietorship, and so it's not a corporation, and it's not dissolved.
Okay, so according to the Freedom of Information Act, you're not going to tell me who you make the checks out to for the snow plowing in Fandera. Is that correct? Because that's what I'm asking.
I don't understand your question, honestly.
I'm asking, who do you pay? Who are the checks made out to for snow plowing in Fandera? Because it's not JEC. I would like to know who it is.
We will get back to you on that.
That's what I heard the last meeting.
I'm going to ask Paul.
Paul, you going to get back with me? I'll trust you on that.
Well, but wait, Paul. Wait, Paul, no. You're recused, so I think it'd be better, cleaner to just make a straight break, and you can discuss this afterward.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other members of the public online as well? Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve the 2022 budget amendment, number 25, as presented.
Support.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, if you'd like to clarify anything?
The two entities with the state of Michigan are not related to the JEC that does the snow plowing. He is not an LLC. So he's registered as a doing business ass through Oakland County. If you call Oakland County, you can look him up. And he, so he does not have a corporation. It's a doing business ass. So he's a sole proprietor, which I'm sure you're familiar with that. And the checks are made out to JEC Lawn Services. It just doesn't say LLC at the end, so it's not the ones you see online.
Okay, I'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Glad we could clear that up. And Mr. Yager, you have another amendment?
Yes, I do. This is Amendment Number 26, and this is similar to the last meeting, where we removed from some large projects from the safety path budget, because they were not going to be completed in 2022. This is actually for the general CIP projects. There's several of them out here that I would like to remove. And again, to clarify why we're removing them, we have budgets that are going to be presented at the next meeting. And with these numbers being out there, they're going to be rebudgeted. So we would basically be distorting the ending fund balances by having these out there twice. And that's the whole purpose of trying to remove some of these projects that we know for a fact are not going to be done, because we don't want them out there twice, obviously. So going through the list here, within the Township Hall Department of the General CIP Fund, we have land improvements. It included $612,000 for the Walden Road paving project. But that project has been delayed until 2023 at the earliest. And we also had $77,000 for the Walden Road Design Engineering, which was the second payment. The $77,000 was paid, along with an additional $24,000, due to increased costs over the estimate of $154,000. The $24,000 additional was not budgeted. But since the construction portion, which was that $612,000, was not going to be used, the additional amount came from that, from basically re-appropriating those funds to make that extra $24,000 payment. In addition, we just recently approved a security, Township Security Project, for $89,000. Again, we knew the $612,000 wasn't going to be used, so we re-appropriated that as well. So basically, what I'm looking at on this particular line item is to remove $450,000 of the original amount. It still leaves about $47,000, because I know on the last bill that we got for engineering, there were invoices out there that we hadn't been billed for yet. So I know we have additional charges coming. So I felt comfortable leaving $47,000 out there, just in case we do get billed for that this year, which I think we will. Number two on here is equipment included $30,000 for new carpeting here at Town Hall. That will not happen in 2022. It will be rebudgeted in 2023. In 2022, we did reappropriate $3,100 of that for the network upgrade project. So the remaining amount of $26,900 I would like to remove. In the Parks Department, land improvements for Bay Court General. There was about $19,000 left over from the Bay Court Parking Lot Project that can be removed. We had Brady Lodge out there for $50,000. It was going to be used for an HVAC upgrade. But that will not be used now in '22, and that project has now been flipped over to be using ARPA funds. Let's see here, what do we have else? The next one here is also land improvements for the playground. Big project, $770,000 budgeted, of which $22,000 has been spent on engineering. There's about $747,000 left. And of that $700,000, that amount can be removed, as the playground is not to be started until 2023. And the remaining $47,000 is needed to cover any remaining engineering costs in '22. The $700,000 will be rebudgeted in 2023. Land improvements, the final one here, Deer Lake Beach, has $60,000 remaining, and that was for the beach restoration project, which is also now being funded through ARPA. So those dollars are no longer needed as well. And those are the items that I'm looking to remove from the General CIP Fund.
So they will be removed and then carried forward to 2023?
That is correct. Or later.
Or later, yeah. But for the meantime, they'll be parked in 2023, apparently.
Correct.
Probably. General Fund, or, yeah. Okay, any questions or comments by members of the board? So we're really not spending money, we're just moving it around?
Just moving it around, taking it out of the budget, so we can't spend it.
Can't spend, okay. All right. Comments, questions? Members of the public? Comments, questions? Anybody online? If not, let's bring it back to the board, and is there a motion to move this forward?
Most approve that 2022 budget amendment, number 26, as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nine is a request to make a board appointment. And this board has to do with the Video Center Administrative Board, which is a combined effort by the school district and the township to run the video center, among other things. And the township has three member, three township resident members, and the school has three, we had a member by the name of John Doolin, who does not wish to be reappointed. And so that leaves one vacancy by a township, for a township-appointed member. And I can also point out that I am, as a supervisor, I am on that board currently. And as soon as the supervisor role changes, then the representation by the supervisor will be modified as well, just to clarify that at this point. But this, tonight is, we're just dealing with this one seat. We have had a recommendation by Steve Hayer from the schools to appoint a certain individual who now lives in the township. He's an engineer at Chrysler. I interviewed him in my office and was very impressed by him. He's interested, and I think he'd be an asset to this. And so I propose Robert Pizzi, P-I-Z-Z-E-Y, for this appointment.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
So I see on our website that we have the three members of the township that you mentioned are inspired, the three members are inspired. But, so we have three vacancies, as far as I know, right?
No, two want to be reappointed and.
Okay, so we have this one. Okay.
Yeah.
I just send the member of the school board, Steve Hayer, wants recommend.
Recommended Mr. Pizzi.
Okay. I recall when we used to have negotiation with the school, we're going to have, we, I believe we have one extra vote in the township against the school. You see, the school have, I guess, two or three, and we have four members, you see?
Okay.
And we're going to keep on, that's right. So Steve Hayer is a member of the school. Do you think it's conflict of interest that he actually recommending someone that he trusts to represent, basically, for, to me, it's like the school is bringing someone that they know them to have a majority over the township. And to me, it's kind of like, I don't know what the rest of the board think about that, but I will prefer to maybe, to hold that for right now, if we can.
Well, I, that's why I interviewed Mr. Pizzi in my office personally, to make sure that he was going to be a good township representative. And quite honestly, on this board, most of the issues are really not township versus school.
No, no, I understand.
They're really for, for the interest of the, of the video center and so forth. So I felt very comfortable with this.
Right. By the way, how you presented, somebody in the school recommended that way. I don't think it's a conflict with the school, meaning the conflict of a fight. I'm talking about conflict of, some conflict of interest in a way how you presented, that's all.
Well, I'd be perfectly happy to accept your statement. I disagree with it 100%, but, but so be it. Okay. Yeah, Paul?
Kind of, in some ways, you think about what kind of decisions are going to be made by that board. But that's a recommending board, right? They don't, they don't have the authority to take. Could we understand the, the authority of that board? Because the township would still have to approve budgets if we want to send them, right?
Absolutely, yes.
I haven't reviewed it, but financially, absolutely.
So because of my initial reaction was, I think I, there's, I would have some concerns based on what you said. But the fact that that board, this board, has the authority over the budgets and everything, so we still control that.
Right.
And so I'm a little less concerned, because if they had more authority, I think I'd be right with you. But, and I also know Steve Hayer, and I think he wants what's good for the, for all, you know, and so.
Right.
Certainly understand where you're coming from. But they, we're the ultimate purveyors of what's going to happen from a budgetary standpoint. And are there other ones coming up for renewal soon?
Well, the supervisor representative.
Okay. Listen, I understand, and that's why we have you for discussion, and you got a good point. I just, I just, myself, I feel weird going to the school board and telling them, recommending who I want the school board to appoint as a representative, and make some recommendation for the school. I just think it's weird, as a township elected official, go to the school and tell them who I want in the board. I mean, it's, to me, it's kind of, oh, but I understand your point.
Did we get any other applications, or did we, did we request any other applications?
No other applications.
Did we post it?
As far as I know, we did. I don't know that for.
I didn't publish anything. My office didn't publish anything on paper.
So it wasn't published, and so.
So I would like to actually make a motion to actually look for applicants and people that want to apply, because I know people that really want to apply, and want to be involved. And I'd rather get people from our community interested to serve than just having someone, member of the school, to tell us who they want in the board. That's what I would recommend I make a motion for.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Or any members of the public? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Vincent Bazone, 7925 Foster Road. And my question, Superintendent Fisher, is, is this the only guy that you interviewed?
This is the only person I interviewed, yes.
And how did he get to you?
As I mentioned, Steve Hayer, who is the former Chair of the School Board, is now, I think, a Chair of the, of a larger Board of Schools. And he has, has been chairing this committee, this Board, for a couple of years. Have a great relationship, and I've gotten to know him. He's not anybody that advocates for the school or for the township. He advocates for what's, what's best for the studio and video performances. And he mentioned that this, Mr. Pizzi was an upstanding person, well-educated, good in engineering, and that he would be available. And so I got his, made contact with him, and asked him if he would come into the office. And I had a nice discussion with him, and he seemed like a perfect candidate to me.
I'm, I'm sure there's no question about his qualifications. The question that I have is, knowing that there's been, let's say, favoritism on the part of the board in the past in terms of selecting people.
What board?
Your board.
Which board?
Pardon me?
What board are you referring to? Because we're talking about two or three boards here.
I'm talking about this board.
Okay.
Okay. And so I'm just questioning, is this guy a favorite guy? Is he being favored and pushed along by somebody, or is this an open competition for this position? Or is the position so insignificant that it really doesn't matter?
Well, it's never insignificant. It's never insignificant. I actually, as I recall, I put in the Township Times, I put a number of seats that were going to be coming available. gonna be coming available, and requested people to make applications for the various seats. Didn't hear anything.
Okay.
But, you know, if the board would like to push this forward, I mean, so be it. I think this is a really qualified candidate, and so that's why I support it.
And I was just coming from a point of no competition, that's all.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments by members of the public? Anybody on the, online? Paul?
I would just say that if we want to be, at least be consistent, I think we always post when we want people to apply for these, and to not have posted at all, no matter how good he is, I think, I think doesn't look good. And I, and I'm gonna err on the side of caution with it, and maybe he'll be the best one that's there, but I think at least to have the process to look at that makes sense to me, so I think I'm gonna go in that direction.
We already make a motion.
We have a motion, so...
Any other discussion by the board?
I have a comment, supervisor.
Yes.
San Morocco, 8815 Pine Knob Road. Just for clarity, you said that there's three people up for appointment, so I believe that all three of those people still need to be reappointed. The fact that they choose to stay on the board, I do not believe is how the process should work, so that if you want to change people, you have that opportunity at the time of reappointment by just saying, well, they want to stay on the board, and not having the board members familiarize themselves with those people, I don't believe is the proper way of going about that process.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, and I don't know whether the other members are actually due for appointment. They may be staggered, but I'll find out, and if they, if they need to be reappointed, we'll take care of that. And this, this member may have actually prematurely resigned, I'm not sure, but Mr. Doolin. But we'll find out and make sure that everybody's duly appointed. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Okay, I mean, sure, I mean, I'm in favor, I already made the motion.
I'm saying, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Or nay?
Nay.
Two nays, three two. Motion carries, exactly. Request to accept the resignation of Township Trustee Paul Brown. This is the next item on the agenda, and there are some other things that are in connection with this, but...
Jerry?
Yes.
Quick question. I think in the motion B, is we should, is a treasurer or trustee is the position in motion B? I think it's, I think it's trustee, right? We mean trustee?
The resignation of the trustee.
In motion B, he says, it says treasurer should be trustee, I agree.
Where is this?
Yeah, trustee, correct. If we get to that point, amend that, yes.
Okay. So it would be to accept the resignation, and then clerk has advanced some other information that we want to look at in terms of a replacement timeline that she has advanced for our discussion, and that's up for dialogue at this point. And I, the proposal is to interview and make a possible appointment starting on Wednesday, October 26. And I would ask the boards indulgence. I have been invited to have dinner with the Michigan Supreme Court on that evening. It's a Wednesday night, I never imagined that it would be a board night, and I have paid the money and all that sort of thing, so I would ask that we do the interviews and possible appointment on October 27.
I just think first, before we discuss that, that we need to make a motion to accept the resignation first, before we proceed with the timeline for the replacement.
Is it all on one motion?
It's two motions.
Two motions.
Oh, there are two motions, okay. I looked at it quickly.
Dan, do I recuse on this, or what do I?
No, there's no, there's no conflict, right?
Okay, this is, so this is motion A.
Correct.
Is there any other, any comment or discussion by the board? Any comment or discussion by members of the public on this one? Online? All right, back to the board then. Is there a motion to move this forward?
Move to accept the notice of resignation from Paul A. Brown as a trustee, member of the Chartered Township of Independence Board of Trustees retroactively at 12:00 midnight on Tuesday, September 27, 2022, due to having received the appointment of Township Treasurer.
Moved and seconded. Any doubts, the discussion? All in favor of the motion on motion A?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the resignation is accepted. On motion B, I don't know if there's a need for me to go through my request, which I'm asking the board to consider, to, on the schedule put forward by the clerk, to do the, begin the interviews and possible appointment on October 27 and not October 26.
I have some comments.
Carry it.
I also provided in the packet two different postings. One is for a single position, single trustee position, but we do have, as I stated in the May, the possibility of the vacancy of trustee Aliaga after the election. So I did provide two different publication notices, one for a multiple trustee, seeking for multiple trustees or a single. So should we move forward? With that approval tonight, I need direction from the board on which notice to publish in the, on the website, and then also in the paper. And I thought maybe Dan might want to give just a little bit of background on, are we able to appoint for that second position and a timeline and things like that? Is that something that we can move on, or what he recommends for a second motion, should we have the vacated seat from trustee Aliaga?
Right, so, so the law provides that the board has 45 days to pick the replacement for the trustee. So that takes us until November 11. Of course, the election is on November 8. We also have a write-in cutoff of October 28, so there's a window there where the board would be fairly comfortable knowing, and you'll make it conditioned upon the fact that the supervisor position, or the trustee position, has been vacated by trustee Aliaga, but you can conditionally approve 30 days in advance of the actual appointment. So there's a window there where you could pick both the trustee position of Paul Brown as well as Jose Aliaga, and from the same pool and the same candidates.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Paul?
Can Jose, can trustee Aliaga vote for the person who's gonna fill his own seat?
No.
Then we need to wait, because he'll be, i- if we do it before he takes office, he's not gonna get to vote.
But isn't it just a notice? The question is only a notice?
Yes, I mean, well, there's two questions.
No, because if we have a vote to fill his seat, he needs to be able to vote for that, as supervisor.
That'll be a different vote, right?
Yes, yes. I mean, well, it depends how the board wants to do it. I think the first question, yeah.
So, if we wait, if we, okay, hypothetically, if we do interview on October 27, the deadline to file for a write-in, which would be the only contestant in that race, if nobody files as a contestant as a write-in on the 28th, the board, I think, could move at its first meeting on November 1st, which would be the meeting before the election, to make that appointment.
But he wouldn't be able to vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it is true that trustee Aliaga would not be able to vote for his replacement.
Once that came up.
Once that came up.
But that's not what's up on the board tonight.
Well, I think there's two issues. So the first issue is, do you just want to collect a single pool for both positions?
Right.
Once you decide that, you could wait until after the election.
Wait for the second vote until after he's appointed and use the interviews we did.
Trustee Brown's position needs to be decided by November 11, that's all.
Yeah, right.
Right. So you could have two different votes, but I think the clerk is trying to streamline the pool of candidates.
Right.
And one notice.
And that's the only thing that's on tonight.
The only thing that would change is having the second vote happen after November 20.
But that's not even on tonight.
I understand that, but we just...
Well, there is a timeline for interviews and so forth.
For interviews?
Yeah, and all of that could be still done, and we could still cover the appointment of trustee Aliaga's position after, and I'd wait until after November 20, actually.
Sure, I like that.
Yeah, when he's sworn in.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Since we're canceling, or if we do not approve the Wednesday interview, I would prefer if we could set a second alternative date. We typically do, and since this is a part-time position, I'm anticipating we'll have several applicants, just so that we can give everyone equal opportunity, ample time, that we're not here until midnight, if we could maybe schedule a second date for, unless we do that on the November 1st meeting, our regular board meeting, or if we would schedule another special.
Are you doing the 26th because that's the deadline date, or, I mean, why wouldn't, couldn't we do the 25th and the 27th?
The 25th is proposed for another meeting on a further...
Coming up front.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Could we do them on our, on our meeting on November, on the first?
We can, as long as it's not another 12 item.
Yeah, we'll do as many as we can on the first date, and however you fit them in.
All right, then we won't schedule, schedule another second. Is everyone available on Thursday, the 27th of October? And is 5 o'clock an okay time? Just so we can get more fit in.
Just one other comment. Let's make an assumption we get a dozen applications. Are we interviewing a dozen people? Or would it make sense for the board to find some method to be able to indicate, look, there's probably six people that none of us are gonna vote for, and does it make more sense to have enough time for the other six candidates to be thoroughly vetted? And how, how might we do that? Because, you know, for us to know we're not gonna vote for somebody, and then have to spend the time to come in and talk, and they're gonna get no consideration, and I don't know how the board feels.
Whatever decision like that, it's gotta be an open meeting.
Yes. So do we do one where we par it down without interviews, and then say we'd like to interview these people? I'm okay either way, but just a suggestion. Or that could be decided, I mean, I don't know, can be decided later, maybe we only get six applications.
Right. Because we don't know yet.
Yeah. We can talk about that, I guess. We have another meeting before then anyways, we could reconsider.
Yeah, 27, you're saying, 5 o'clock?
Yeah, but it's 5 o'clock.
What's the deadline? I'm sure, what's the deadline for the getting them?
The 20th.
Okay.
I don't know, but the 20th, the 27th.
Okay. Brown, you're okay with 5?
11:27.
Yeah.
5:00, yeah.
Okay. 22, Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
10:27.
Okay.
Okay. So is there a motion for B that would merely exclude Wednesday, October 26, 2022?
I move to approve the treasurer vacancy appointment timeline.
Trustee.
Trustee. Excuse me. Trustee. I pointed it out, and I still forgot it. Sorry about that. The trustee vacancy appointment timeline is amended to authorize the clerk to publish notice and to call a special meeting for Thursday, October 27 at 5:00 p.m.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? By the board, I don't think I called for input from the public. Any other members of the public, including online? Yes, ma'am.
Linda Bizon, 7925 Foster Road, Clarkston, Michigan, 4346. I guess this is actually a question to our attorney, and I just am asking. During the discussion, you said that Jose Aliaga could not vote for his replacement, but why was Paul Brown allowed to vote for himself to get the position of treasurer? What is the difference there?
Thank you, yeah. Well, there could be a number of differences, but that's just what the case law says. So it's very clear with regard to the replacement of the trustee, he cannot vote for his replacement, and there is at least guidance from the Michigan Township Association with regard to Paul Brown voting for himself. And in fact, they have suggested that all board members are supposed to vote on most motions, or the motions that are presented, unless there is a specific conflict identified by the law. So in that case, that's why Paul was allowed to vote. And it had been researched.
Linda Bizon, 7925 Foster Road, Clarkston, Michigan. And I realize you said it was research, but it obviously was a conflict, I just wanted to say that, to give himself a job.
Thank you. All right. We've had all comments from the public, including online, I take it. Is there a motion? I mean, is there a...
We have a motion.
I already have a motion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is number 11. This has to do with utilization or disposition with regard to the, and a policy determination, and really, this is to, to, a request to commence a dialogue, possibly make some decisions, maybe some narrowing, with regard to the utilization or disposition of $2.3 million of surplus monies remaining in the road millage fund after the township has approved, improved 28 miles of primary road. So that money is available, there are various alternatives to, of what can happen to that money, and I'd like to just start the process, because some decisions should be made on this issue. And option number one, of course, would be to endeavor to return the money to the public, to the people that, that paid the money. And I'm advised that since this law, this millage was lawful, it's unclear whether we can not utilize it in the township like this, but that'll be a subject that we can get to at some other time if the board decides that the proper route would be to give it back. Another option that I have explored, based upon responses from the public on what they think that the money should be used for, is the idea of improving the so-called cut-through roads in the township. And the cut-through roads would be, like Parview Road would be Snow Apple, and these are roads that are really not worn out and destroyed by the people that live on them. They're destroyed by people that come from elsewhere, cut through those roads on their way to a different location, shortcuts, or whatever you want to call them. And, and so in that case, it's really, these roads are really not quote-unquote neighborhood roads in the usual sense of the word, nor are they actual primary roads, but they're somewhere in between. But the truth is that they, they benefit people township-wide, not necessarily all the public, and maybe not as many members of the public as a primary road, but certainly a number of people well beyond the people that live in that neighborhood. I have asked Dan Kelly for an opinion on whether we could utilize the 2.3 million for cut-through roads or other road, public, county, county-public road improvement, and based upon the language in the ballot proposal in which that millage was approved, the opinion is that we can, that we have the authority to do that. I've discussed this concept with the Road Commission of doing the cut-through roads, and they're very well-received. They are anxious to do that, actually, I'd say, and so they are willing to, and I think they're in the process now of analyzing which roads are cut-through, which roads are, receive the significant amount of traffic, and which ones would be good candidates for the utilization of this... uh, and, and which ones would be good candidates for the utilization of this money in conjunction with, and I don't want to neglect to say this, it'd be in conjunction with, uh, special assessments on uh, the people that live in the area. Now, their assessments wouldn't, obviously wouldn't be as much as they would be if it was only a neighborhood road that was being approved for them, because this is a, a road for the benefit of, of far larger community. And so, uh, the road commission has also indicated, similar to the, the arrangement made with the road millage monies, that the road commission would probably, they haven't given me a commitment because the road, the Board of Road Commissioners hasn't, hasn't passed on this, assuming we have a road commission, uh, in the future. But the, uh, that the road commission would be, uh, recommended to contribute the design and engineering for the project, which is no small matter either. So that is, uh, something that was encouraging, and, um, so, so I would like to, I think, I think this would really be an important public benefit if, uh, if we improve those public roads, and it would, I think, increase the value of properties in the township in, in a significant way. So that's option two. Option three would be merely to utilize this money as part of the neighborhood road, uh, improvement program. In the past, we've contributed $200,000. This would be a much more significant contribution. But with, uh, considering the number of roads that might, uh, apply for this under those circumstances, I'm not sure that, that this amount of money would be sufficient. But that's, you know, to be, to be analyzed if, if the board wishes to do that. Uh, option number four would be to make some other use of the money, and, uh, and there may be other uses of the money. So we have those four options, give it back, cut-through roads, uh, neighborhood, uh, road improvement program, or some other analysis. And I would, um, uh, throw it open to the board, hoping that we can at least, uh, begin with maybe the process of eliminating, uh, one or more of these alternatives, so that we can, um, uh, move this forward and, and ultimately make a decision. Thank you. Board members?
Sure, um, first of all, Jerry, um, thank you so much. I see that you put a lot of work in this, because it looks like you, you did your homework. And it's true, it's no secret about the condition of some of the roads. We have, uh, Snow Apple, Parview, and some other roads that is in very poor condition, and, uh, and we, we try, we want to actually do something about it. I hear a concern during the summer, Paul and I, and probably yourself as well, we're listening to a lot of people, they have serious concern about that. And we have this $2.3 million, and we want to do what is right with good faith, obviously. And I see you give us four auctions. I was wondering, um, this is not something, a decision we have to make it tonight, maybe, but I was thinking, whenever it is, maybe if we do a public hearing and we're able to get some input from the people to see what they think and gets more, uh, ideas from the people, maybe it's more beneficial as well. Because you see, when I was doing the summer, most of the people that I talked, they want their money back, they, they want a refund. Most of the people that I have a contact when I, face-to-face, and I recall maybe two people that says, it will be some ideas, and the people that actually wants, that is people that live in circumstances that would like to see the road fixed. But overall, most people says, hey, I would like my money back. But I understand also, and I read, um, the opinion prepared for us, that it's going to be a little bit difficult. That's why I would like to get, uh, input from the residents, not just for one single area, but overall for different places, north, south, east, and west, to see maybe what they think about this. And get, and maybe start from there. It's just what I.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Paul?
I had initially really been leaning towards, uh, giving the money back. When this was passed, it was by a very narrow margin, which means 40-plus percent of the people didn't even want us to do it. And so, for me, that was an overriding factor. That it wasn't close, it was super close. It's not like it was 75%, it's 25%. It was like 53 to 47, something like that, that passed. And, and, but having read the opinions in whether or not we can give it back, the bigger issues, even if we can give it back, my understanding now is that we have to give it back to the people who paid it. That millage was paid over four years. Some houses might have been sold twice in that time period. We got to go find out who paid it. If it was paid through a mortgage company, we've got to determine who had the mortgage. If the person has passed away, which of the kids gets it? And the impact of that, and I've dealt with it, because I've done this stuff in the treasury where you're trying to figure out who gets some, some, some funds, in particular, when a tax payment is made twice. We had to jump through a lot of hoops to do that the correct way, to make sure the right person gets it, because by law, the first payment that comes in is you have to keep, even if the wrong person paid it. So there's laws about how we do this. The work involved with trying to get the 2.3 million back to the public, we probably would spend a couple hundred thousand dollars just trying to make sure who gets it. And then we might have legal fights with people are going to, who should have got it. And it's for small amounts of money individually. So I, that makes me have to rethink about giving it back. The, the other two options, for me, if you try to repair the cut-through roads, there's a lot of people in the township that never drive on those cut-through roads. And so then it comes about fairness. What's a way to do this that would allow some benefit to the most number of residents? And I think you could combine two of these. If you put the money into the Neighborhood and Road Improvement Program, allowed for a higher, um, contribution for what is determined to be cut-through streets. So let's say, for example, right now, how much are we willing to put in? Is it $100,000 on a, on a project?
Yes.
Right now, we're at $100,000 on a project. With this kind of funds, we could push this up to say $250,000 for a project. There's not going to be 20 projects. There just won't. People can't get the votes to do it. But if we came in at 250 on any project, and, and 500, if the cut-through roads get there and it's done, we could spread this out amongst a lot of the residents. And so it might be some kind of a hybrid solution to get, uh, the most residents to get benefit from the tax dollars. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Good thoughts. Harry?
I, as Paul initially, was leaning towards giving the money back to the residents. Although I don't know, and maybe since our budget analyst is here, if he could give us an idea of a rough guesstimate of what that amount is. I mean, I think the public would be interested to, to want the money back, as trustee Aliaga said. But are we looking at $50 per residence? Are we looking at $2,198 per residence? I mean, if we've got 2.3 million versus how many, and Paul looks like he might be.
I'm gonna, I can throw a number together.
But the concept of trying to reach all of those people that may be unreachable, and then the money we're going to have in the time.
I have a number.
Okay.
There's 15,000 parcels roughly in the township, and so just doing the math, the average, the average is $133. So, we would, we would waste that money by trying to find a way to make sure we get it back correctly to the people who have to get it, especially if you consider that tax payments got made by different people over the four-year time period. It would be, it would be chaos. We'd probably have to hire people to help get it done. So I would, maybe I could be wrong, but that doesn't, from a process standpoint, that's not going to work. I can just see it now. And from a dollar standpoint, I mean, what are we going to do? Give back, back somebody $133 and ask them to thank us? Because that ain't, that ain't enough to go to the, the dinner anymore. So trying to find some hybrid way to improve some roads around here seems to me would be the greatest opportunity.
I'm looking more back at, towards the cut-through, but I do have a lot of questions. I know it's really not so much on the table yet. Probably a lot of questions for the road commission. I'd like to see if they could give us a figure on how much it would cost to do one mile, roughly one mile. And then if, once, if they would provide us with a list of their worst-case scenarios of the cut-throughs. We don't all access those cut-throughs, I agree with you, but in some sense, the, a lot of us do. Because I think of Paramus. I think Paramus is bad. I pass cars turning onto Paramus every morning, taking kids to school. There's a lot of activity on Paramus with the kids with school. The sheriff's department accesses Paramus. I think they cut through the church, they access Paramus. Um, so in a sense, we're, we're benefiting from that. I don't know where that might fall, but I think of that as a cut-through road. Bluegrass, I don't know, again, where that might fall. I know that is another cut-through, but that is in access to a precinct where many people have the opportunity to vote, and there's a church off of Bluegrass. So I'm leaning more towards that, but I do, I would rather, I think the other thing I'm thinking of too is if they give us their, their punch list, uh, per se, I would want us to do, if we did any of the cut roads, uh, cut-through roads, I'd want them to be done completely. Not all of one road and a quarter of another road. Either, you know, if we can't finish the whole road, then we don't do the road. But also into that, as you mentioned, Supervisor Fisher, with, um, SADs, it comes with compliance with the residents that live there that are going to have to put into it as well.
Yeah.
So that, I think, things may fall different on that punch list with communities or areas that are willing to participate and, and financially can participate in an SAD. So someone may drop off, you know, because of that. The Neighborhood Road Improvement Project, I didn't, I never thought, Paul, about doing a hybrid. But the Neighborhood Improvement Project, I think, was great in concept, since I've been on the board. I don't believe anyone has utilized it. The board has increased it, trying to gain more interest in it over the years. But I think when we even increased it last year, um, we took a look at, and I think in the may, if we had listed, the cost of the projects to do these neighborhood roads is just astronomical. And we had an $8 million project, something that comes to mind, I think, was Deerwood. And for some reason, that stuck in my mind. I think that was going to be, was it?
Thirty or forty thousand a home.
Thirty or forty thousand dollars per home. And, you know, it's, I just think, it's, we're almost, they're almost priced out of doing that. I think it is a great, a grand opportunity, a great project that the boards put forward to the community. But they're, they haven't utilized it, and we continue to increase it. Maybe if we increase it a little bit more, but I think if we get the punch list and if the road commission is willing to put in the engineering and some of those costs, if we can get an idea of how much we can do, I mean, there's still a lot of variables. How much, how much will it cover? Might only be one street. $2.3 million is a lot to me, but in a big road project, or how many road projects? And what's the longevity? Is it going to be like the rest of the roads that we've done with the road millage? Where it's like, um, isn't it a 10-year, a 10-year warranty, right?
Neighborhoods tend to last quite a bit longer, but they don't have as.
But the cut-throughs though.
Cut-throughs, yeah.
The cut-throughs. So I'm interested to hear more, but I am leaning against, um, giving the money back, 100 and, roughly $133. I think we can do a whole lot more collectively with that money for the township than individually back to the homeowners, so. That's where I'm at with that, and leaning less towards the Neighborhood Road Improvement, but I'd like to see more.
Ron?
I guess, I'm like everybody else. I'd like the money to come back, but, uh, I agree that the amount per parcel or per, um, entity that's paying the money is, is going to be small. So I guess, in my thinking of this whole thing, is, I think the, the 2.3 million or whatever we have left over should, should be held in a trust, uh, for, for the roads that, uh, we repaired. We outlined what those roads are. I think, uh, and to me, we're still not finished. I mean, on Sashabaw, there's still, like, the Michigan turnarounds, the Aprils and, and those turnarounds still haven't been done. So I mean, to me, there's still sections of, of the roads that we did that, that need some more work. And, you know, the money could still be utilized for that. Like I said, Sashabaw, between, uh, Maybe and Walden, you know, there's quite a few of the Michigan turnarounds that need to be repaired, so. They were, they were supposed to be part, repaired as part of the, the road, and that's part of the stuff that didn't get done. I'm sure there's other areas, you know, and, and, and over the next 10 years, that, you know, the roads are supposed to last that long. I'm, I'm sure there's going to be some repairs or something needed, uh, for that. So I, I think by putting it in a, in account and utilizing it for those roads is, is probably the one and only fair thing that we can do, and still keep, in keeping with what the millage was voted for in the first place. I, I guess, I would love it to go to subdivision roads or cut-through roads or any of those. I don't see how, how any way possible you could do it and make it be fair for all the residents in the township. I just think you're going to, like, Harry, your idea of getting one road fixed would, would be great, but whose road is it? You know, how are you going to do that? And how are you going to be, how are you going to tell the other residents, like, okay, we gave all our money to that guy? Or that, that area, not the rest of the people, so. So I guess, I, I just don't, you know, if we can come up with a way to do that, uh, I think the, um, the mantra still has to be, has to be on a county road. We can't use it for private roads.
Yeah.
So, you know, so that eliminates a number of people in different subdivision stuff, so. I, I guess that's why I keep coming back, the more I think about it, I think it should just be held in trust and held in account for the roads that we outlined initially, uh, and take care of those over the next 10 years, so.
Just to, uh, cover one question that you did raise on that, uh, how are we going to make the selection? I think, uh, one of the things that the road commission would, would do for us, and maybe they'll come back with this as it is, is they would, they may be looking at, um, uh, the roads that, uh, need the greatest attention for public safety at this point. You know, that, that really affect the most people and are in, in the worst conditions. So that, that decision might be made for us, provided that the people in the subdivision are willing to contribute to the SAD. So, uh, obviously, obviously, we're not going to narrow things down very far today, but, uh, we've got a number of, just, number of points, and I'm glad, uh, that we've aired some thoughts on this. That's very positive. And, um, uh, my suggestion would be to wait until we get some information from the road commission and distribute it and, and have a further dialogue. Paul?
Just one other, one other point. Um, for me, to, to go in and pave, oh, there's two things. Number one, we did something different as a board in 2019, and that was, that was at the time I, I became a trustee. And, and that's that, when we, when we went to get, uh, mine roads paved that were dirt and repaved the ones that were already paved in the back part of Thandera, we came to the board and said, we want to try something different. We want to be in charge of it and just you have the township be the bank. And the result of that was significantly reduced costs in getting that project done, which also came in way under budget. And mon, and in that particular case, those monies did go back to the taxpayers, got reduced on their tax bills, so we did that. I think there's a great opportunity for neighborhoods that are on public roads. Ours were private, so we, you know, we had to grow. There's a big opportunity on private, on public roads, and the road commission will participate with it, where they do, we do the same thing, and the residents work through the process, getting bids, instead of tearing everything out and redoing it. You know, the road, the road commission is okay with doing some repairs, and let the township act as the bank. The road commission ships in money, okay? And it can reduce by half the cost of what the project might be, which would result in more people participating in the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program. My issue with just repaving one road is there's going to be other people who have to come up with a lot of money to pave their roads, and the people who get this cut-through done aren't chipping in anything. I don't think that's fair.
Oh, they would. They would have to.
There would have to be a special assessment.
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
And to participate. But if that's the intention, putting this money into the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program, but making much larger opportunity for contributions, you could be putting in 10% of the cost on some of these projects. If they're in the $2 million range and you do 250 or a cut-through up to 500, that's a more impactful number that might convince some other, some of the residents to join the program.
And that's something we'd have to look at, but there is always the concern that, that if you don't do one or the other here, that you're going to dilute both to the point that, that nothing gets done. That's my concern.
Understood.
Yeah. So, alright, well, this is a great discussion. Um, I don't think we need a motion, uh, unless the board desires to make, anybody desires to make one. Did we ask for public input on this already? Did we ask for public input on this already?
No.
Anybody like to weigh, weigh in on this? Members of the public, including online?
Mr. Supervisor, I would.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is Sam Morocco again.
Address?
The representative of.
What's the address?
Eight-eight-one-five Pine Knob Road.
Thank you.
As a representative from the dirt road areas, I was wondering if anyone had had put any consideration into improving any of the dirt road conditions in the township that are certainly public roads and not private. We've, we're pretty, we, you know, the township's been generous with the internal neighborhood SADs with the taxpayers' money, which I'm firmly for. I agree that they need it, and there needs to be a better process to make it more affordable for those people that live in those neighborhoods. But there is a lot of people in the township that deal with the dust and the dirt and the unsafe road conditions after storms and washouts, the lack of ditch maintenance, flooding of our properties from the roads. And there's a lot, there's a lot of people that live on the dirt roads, a lot of people that use the dirt roads, and I didn't hear anybody even consider helping any of them out with any of this money. So I just wanted to put that bug in everyone's ear to think of it as a township-wide road problem, not just a internal neighborhood problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think there was one other person that wanted to speak. Yes, sir.
Mike Lee, eight-two-two-four, Kiribati True. Just a quick question. I don't know, can those funds used for roads, could they be used for like lights and for safety? For adding left turn lanes and things like that?
Really, this is for improvement of roads, I believe is the way the millage read.
So just a question is, could we look at safety around schools? So I know there's some schools that have no left-hand turn lights to go to them, and it's an issue in the mornings and in the evenings when kids are being picked up. And just looking around those areas around our schools and see if maybe we can improve just those areas, because everybody uses those.
We'd have to examine that question. Thank you for bringing it to us.
But I appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, does anybody feel like a motion is required here? We're really not taking any action. We're just going to, going to try to acquire some additional information and come back.
Yeah, I think it's important because Mr. Morocco brought a good point that we kind of missed it. And I just would like to add a, a public hearing or something where we can get input from the public. Like, we missed a couple of points. Maybe we already missed some other points for other residents in different locations, and I think it's always good to hear what people have to say, you know, and see why it's going to hurt us to get more input from local residents. Just to add some, some ideas maybe up there. That's all. I agree with everybody, by the way. It was a healthy discussion.
So does anybody think that it would be worth getting Dan's opinion on whether we can give the money back to people who says it was a lawful millage?
I wouldn't spend the money to get the opinion, because even if we can, it, it's, we're going to waste a lot of money trying to do it and a lot of man-hours. And I mean, I think, could be a couple, we could lose two hundred grand. Because remember, it's a hundred and thirty-three dollars divided by four years. I mean, we could be given back forty-five bucks to, or thirty bucks to somebody each year, three different, four different people owning houses. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, let's get something definitive then, that we're not going to do that. Is there a motion that we're not going to give the money back?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that, that we are, will not, we're not going to consider giving the money back. We're going to choose one of the other options.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? I mean, it seems to me that, that if that's still on the table, that we ought to get an opinion, because if we can't do that, then that shouldn't be presented to a public hearing or anyplace else.
I, I'm okay getting an opinion, I guess, but it seems to me the process itself is just about, it's just about a non-starter.
I agree. I agree under all the circumstances. All right, well, we've got a motion. We've had a good discussion.
We can wait. Oh, I'm sure we got a motion.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. So all in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
One, two, three. No? Ron, did you?
I'll, I'll say aye.
Aye, okay. So we're not, we've eliminated, we've, we're successful tonight. We've eliminated one possibility so that we can move forward looking at the other possibilities.
We can make a motion, bring it back later if we want to, right?
Bring what?
That idea.
We can't.
We could.
The better thing to do would be to do it at this meeting or the next meeting.
I just want to be clear with the people watching that.
Oh, I did.
I did promise that I always like to fulfill my promises, and then I try. I just wanted to be clear, I try. I try. That's what the reason why, no, I listen to everyone during the summer. I talked to a lot of people from a lot of precincts, and I have to disagree, but that's healthy disagreement. I understand where you guys coming from.
Just to clarify the record, Kerry wasn't clear that, that there were any no voters.
No, I vote no.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, yeah, I vote no.
Okay, so it's four one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we have one more item on, on the regular business agenda, and that's a request to approve a special meeting for legal services, a legal services actual presentation. And again, we have Kerry's suggestions here on dates, that, that we take this up on October twenty-five, and Ron, this is what we're doing on October twenty-five if we approve this. Tuesday, October twenty-five. And in the meantime, we will be having a few board members and, and department heads.
Subcommittee.
As a, as a subcommittee that, that will review the proposals and give us a rating from, from their standpoint that, that, that will be beneficial to the board to know where, where the department heads and other members stand on, on this. And I will make some suggestions if this motion passes.
And to be clear, the subcommittee then would bring a recommendation to the board on who to interview?
No.
On the twenty-fifth?
We could do, we could do that, but that would mean that the subcommittee would have to meet an open session, because they're going to, they would be eliminating candidates. They would be making a decision, and when you deliberate toward a decision, it's got to be open to the public.
So you're saying the committee is going to make the decision?
No, I'm, I'm, the way I'm proposing it is that the committee will just provide ratings. You know, they'll review it, provide ratings, one to five. I like this one, I like this, you know, this is two, this.
That serves as some background for, for determining on which one, whether it be labor or tax tribunal or whatever, like this, say tax tribunal, say if the assessor or, you know, the committee says this person we think is, you know, is the highest rated person for tax tribunal or whatever. It just kind of gives you a feeling of what the directors feel about the different ones. So it doesn't mean you have to vote that way.
That's right.
The board makes the decision ultimately.
Board makes the ultimate decision.
It's a way for you to get some feedback from directors.
Exactly.
But the board will make the final decision.
Okay, thank you. So the, the, what is on the table for consideration is whether to set the October twenty-five date at five o'clock to permit firms that are making proposals to make presentation to the board and be subjected to an interview process, leading to the ultimate decision hopefully sooner than later. But between now and in October twenty-five, the proposals or copies of the proposals will be provided to the committee, and they would make recommendations.
Well, I'll move to schedule a special meeting of the Township Board on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two at five P.M. With the purpose and agenda for the meeting being to permit firms submitting a proposal to make presentation and be subject to interview by the board. Deliberation and final decision will take place thereafter, potentially as soon as the Township Board's next regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I moved a second in.
Hold on, hold on, we need, we need a public comment.
Yeah, yeah. You can make a motion and then get comment. That's a very, very acceptable procedure.
Take a motion before anything's said or anything.
Well, there's no action that has been taken.
We're not doing anything until we hear from the public.
No action, tell the, tell the public a certain.
Yeah. But I.
But it's still.
I would still like to speak on number twelve.
Yes, you have a, you will have a right to do that.
Thank you.
Yep. Paul?
So my question is, because I think it's a little bit unusual, the elephant in the room here is that you've brought an agenda item to which you're submitting to participate in, in it, which is fairly unusual. And so.
Yes.
So are you going to just, are you going to recuse yourself at this point and just?
Well, and I've discussed this with Dan, and here is the situation. I would certainly recuse myself from any vote on the, on the particular subject that I have proposed. It's a very limited proposal, very, very limited and specifically designated proposal. So I would not, I would ask the board to approve a recusal for that. Aside from that, what I have proposed would really have almost no impact on any other proposal that is made, because it's only finishing projects that I have started. And, and not necessarily from a legal standpoint. Most of the work would be administrative in nature to move the, say, forward. I would be happy to recuse myself. That's why I talked to Dan. I'd be happy to recuse myself from the whole process.
So you want to basically apply for a service because you want to continue the work that you started?
Yes, the, the five projects.
So then a question for you. In the future, on twenty-twenty-four, when my time is up, if I don't get elected, hopefully no, can I do this too? I can apply for a job, for continue the job then I start beginning in November twenty-second? I can do that as well?
You can submit a response to a proposal, yes.
Oh, okay, because I don't think so. That's what I want to do, but I'm surprised about that. I mean, if you're talking about the Dixie, the DDA, I mean, it's not approved yet. We didn't make any decision about that. They still, we still going to steps. Right? By approving this, I mean, in the future, if you, you're the only bid, by the way. I, I don't know if it was open process, where we call other consultants and we get more people there, because in the, in the labor, the other four, then, I'm very familiar, because I'm at Torsey for ten years. I've been in, I'm familiar with the process, but this one that you create right here is just you. Is no other people, is other people apply for this?
They could have.
But I, it was, we actually put in the clerk's news.
But, but you see, I mean, I'm in a, in a very unique position, in my opinion, that I started these projects that, for example, the DDA project. I'm very heavily involved in working that out, the financing. I've had meetings with the county, I've had meetings out here with SEMCOG, and have worked, in fact, had a meeting this morning with legal counsel as well as Dick Carlisle and Hatman, and we've laid out a specific plan to follow. And it would be very difficult for me, really, to transfer that to information and experience to anybody else. And so I thought it would be in the interest of the township for me to do this. Now, obviously, the board doesn't agree with that, you know, they can just reject it.
I personally, I, in few, in few weeks, I'm going to be taking office. And I don't see in the past having a supervisor, having this special counselor, was why we have the other four, that we have Dan Kelly, and I'd be comfortable working with Dan Kelly, just speaking myself as a township supervisor-elect. I don't think so I'm going to need your services.
Well, that's fine, then vote against it.
Can I finish? Because you like to cut people, but I don't like when you cut me. I have the floor right now.
Go ahead.
All right, let me finish. Are you saying at this point, I, I don't feel comfortable with this, because we build a wrong perception in the community? The perception is, and I talked to a lot of people during Sunday when I see this, people told me they believe that it seems like we tried to find a job for you, and it's not the perception we're going to build. And, but I certainly, if, at that point, it came and I need your help, and I know that I need some questions, yeah, sure, we can maybe, I, maybe we, I can submit that to the board at that point. But this is a big guess, because we didn't even approve the DDA. How are you going to start this process when we didn't actually start with the other one? Not have to be the other way around. Maybe we have to approve the DDA first and then we look this. It's just my opinion.
Well, are you done?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, I'm done.
First of all, we do, we have taken applications for special counsel. We've taken an application for special counsel for prosecutions. We've taken an application for special counsel to do tax review work. We've taken an application for special counsel to do labor work. And I just happen to have put in a much more limited and restricted application for special counsel. And, and I've done so at, at, in my opinion, a low discount price, because I'm not interested in doing this for purposes of, of creating wealth for myself. I'm in it for, to finish these projects that I've started. And, which I'd like to see through and assist the board in seeing through to, to, to the benefit. I mean, the Dixie Highway project, to me, is, is a major project of, of benefit potentially for this township. I mean, if we can upgrade that, that corridor, I think it would be fantastic. And it would, and it would actually upgrade the quality of life and value of properties throughout the township. So that is really my, my thinking, and if, if, and of course, as you say, this is not your typical special counsel work. And I, and if the board doesn't desire that I finish this work, you know, then that's fine, then, then I, then I won't be hired for that purpose. But it seems to me that this is not that unusual to submit a particular special counsel proposal. Paul?
My question is, did the RFP identify the items that you are, that you submitted a proposal for?
No.
Then does it meet the township's policy related to RFPs? Because we've got an RFP for all these specific things, how, would it be normal for us if we did an RFP for, you know, baseball fields, and here's the specs, and someone said, I'm going to build a softball field for you, would we just throw it out and say you didn't qualify? Because we have policies that are pretty strict about how we go about awarding bids through an RFP. So how do we have an RFP that has something added to it that was not part of the RFP?
Well, I mean, in my opinion, it's implicitly part of the RFP, but, you know, as I say, if the board doesn't want me to go forward with this, I won't. I mean, I'm, I'm doing it because I think it's in the interest of the township. I'm, it's at a relatively low price, lower price than anybody else has submitted, probably, and I won't do it.
I mean, I have no doubt, but we don't know.
I won't do it.
Because we didn't ask anybody else to submit to do the DDA work and whatever else there is.
Well, nobody has that information, that, that background of this project.
I think we can all be replaced ultimately.
Fine. That's fine with me. And I'm not going to withdraw it. If you don't want to consider it, fine. Any other questions and comments by the board? Any comments and questions by the public? Okay, yes.
Cheryl Janakis, eighty-nine ninety, Woodland Avenue. Mr. Fisher, that was very vague. You were placed into this township as an intermittent supervisor by the board. You were not elected. Okay, we really appreciate you throwing in your hat, but things really haven't worked out for the township. And I am speaking for many people, not just myself. When you applied for the supervisor's position, I know you find this really amusing, but it makes me very nervous and uncomfortable that you just don't listen. When you were placed in the supervisor position, you passed a resolution for supervisor roles. Same as Mr. Kittle did when he took office, okay? Buried have a stroke here. Okay, so you made a resolution. In that resolution, you wanted to be, uh, you wanted to oversee TEC, non-union employee benefits, parks and recs, senior, safety path advisory improvement, Sashaba corridor improvement, video center administration board, water and sewer, your term, and on this resolution said it ended on November twentieth, okay? This was supposed to end on November 20. Now, you gave everybody a very vague description of what you are requesting, okay? Your term is expiring. The numbers spoke on election day, okay? I'm not, this is nothing against you, but the people voted for Jose, okay? We want to make some improvements to the township. Things have not been working out. The numbers spoke for themselves. The roles are now for the new supervisor-elect. These are his jobs. You're trying to take everything from our new supervisor and control it. We voted him in to take care of these things, the same as Mr. Kittle did. You have no right to be doing this to our township. Respectfully, the residents demand that you relinquish these roles on November 20, as stated in your resolution, and concede to the new supervisor that the people of Independence Township elected. And this is for the people of Independence Township, the ones who voted. You can look at the numbers. You're taking all Jose's work away from him. You might as well still be running the township. With all respect, you need to relinquish your duties to the supervisor. You are trying to take supervisor positions away from the supervisor, and we're not going to stand for it. Nobody in this Independence Township who voted for this supervisor is going to stand for this. There are going to be repercussions. You can't just assign yourself jobs. That's it.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'm Vincent Bizon, 7925 Foster Road. And I just, I wanted some clarification, actually. Let me see what I can. Here it is. This is the, this is what was written in the, come on. And you get this thing to work right. Ah, there we go. It says that the following submitted a proposal to serve only as special counsel to work on a limited number of designated projects the applicant initiated as supervisor of the township, Fisher Consulting, right? So, these projects that you may have initiated, okay, sounds like what you're doing is creating a job for yourself, okay? And those projects that are, whatever they are, are not personal to you. They are administrative projects of the township. And I would think that the board would have enough sense to be able to use the four, are there four lawyers that are employed by the township, if I'm not mistaken? You got four lawyers who can handle any kind of contingency that comes up legally, I'm sure. And the projects need to be handed off. Projects are handed off all the time. You know, if you've ever worked in a big organization, people move around all the time, projects are always handed off to one person or another. You need to hand off the, you need to hand these off to Jose and whoever Jose figures out to do them, number one, okay? And you, you know, you've got 17% of the vote. Time to move on.
Thank you. I'm not trying to not relinquish them, I'm asking the board to make the decision to approve of it nonetheless. Ma'am?
You're trying to create a job for yourself.
Well, it'd be a very low-paying job, I can tell you that. Yes?
Hi, thank you for giving me my time. Linda Bizon, 7925 Foster Road, Independence Township. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a precinct delegate in Independence Township, and on Friday, my phone was ringing off the wall. I had to even delete voicemails because I just couldn't take anymore. A lot of the calls were regarding this, the submitted proposal by Mr. Fisher to serve as special counsel to work on a limited number of designated programs. The more people I spoke to, they would give their number to somebody else, and it was, it was overwhelming. And so I'm going to call ourselves concerned citizens of Independence Township. And we want to thank you, you, Mr. Fisher. You came in to fill in this role when nobody else, the board wouldn't elect anybody else. And so it was very much appreciated, but it is time to move on. We have general counsel for legal services, payroll employment and labor, prosecution and code enforcement, tax and special assessment. I mean, we have plenty of lawyers that can take over. And I requested the board please not accept this. And like I said, coming from concerned citizens, we would appreciate your recommendation to not accept this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public, including online? Okay. We've really got far afield from the actual topic that was up for decision-making, and I believe a motion has been made to set the 25th for purposes of discussion. And, yes, sir.
Well, Paul, I believe the motion should be for the four major applicants that we traditionally have for many years. We should exclude Fisher Consulting from the process. That's the motion I'm looking for. If you agree, because you make the motion, and I think that should be the motion tonight.
You want to amend your motion?
Well, you know, again, when I, when I think about the RFP process, if someone submits something that's not part of the RFP, why would it end up as part of the consideration? I think that's not our normal process.
Well, if you don't think it was part of the RFP, fine.
Well, you've indicated that, we listed legal, we listed, you know, prosecutorial, we listed the four major categories, we didn't list special consideration for specific items to allow somebody else to bid on it.
Well, this would be legal. I'm asking
It's not, but it's specific. We've asked people to bid on the general. We've asked people to bid on the labor. We've asked people to bid on tax and prosecutorial. Was there a line that said special counsel for these items? Because how could you just say, I put it out to say special, but you don't tell them what it is? How are they going to bid on it?
Well, I'm not so sure that the RFP didn't allow this type of proposal. I think it did, but I understand your point. Any other comments?
So I would amend, I would amend my motion to, to have it exclude the, from consideration, special counsel, because it was not part of the RFP. With specificity that would have allowed additional folks to apply for it.
You mean special counsel generally, or just the special counsel proposal that I put in?
The special counsel that was submitted by Fisher Consulting.
Okay.
I second that.
Well, I amended it, someone's already seconded.
Oh, somebody's seconded, oh, sorry.
And then there's an opportunity.
I'll withdraw my second.
Just second, right?
I'll withdraw my second. Go ahead.
You will do your second.
I withdraw my second.
Yeah, so you can second it, Jose.
Okay, second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Nay. To the extent that I can vote, can I vote on that?
No, yeah, actually, no. Sorry, I didn't get it.
All right, will the board allow me to recuse myself on this?
Oh, my goodness. Motion to, move to recuse Supervisor Fisher.
For this vote? Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
So I don't cast a vote.
Can we restate the motion? We're approving the date. Just, just so everybody knows, is on the right page. We're approving the date outlined in the, the motion, and we're also excluding Fisher Consulting from the RFP, just to be clear. Two things in one motion.
Correct.
And it's already been voted on?
Yep.
Okay.
And the vote was?
4-1.
4-0.
Was it?
4-0, was it?
4-0, sorry. Yeah. All right, the last thing to be done on this topic, though, is to appoint the review committee. And so I have, I'm proposing three board members and two department heads. The board members would be Carrie, Paul, and Jose. And the department heads would be those that use the legal counsel more often than others, Dave McKee and Brian Hatman.
Do we need to take action on that?
No, you don't want to take action, because if you do, then they'll be subject to open meetings. Yep. All right. Moving on, that completes the regular business. Communications, there are three sets of reports. Fiscal 2022, actual to budget comments, ending August 31. A report on the building department activity, report August 2022. Fire department monthly report, August 2022. And minutes, one set of minutes from the election commission final, July 5, 2022. Any other board member comments? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?